Welcome to the regular caucus of the Beaufort County Council. You would please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Like a motion to approve the agenda. So move. Second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any objections? We will approve the agenda without objections. Next item is council member discussion. Any members of council? And by the way, let me say that we have online, we have Mr. Passamet and Mr. Flueeling. Am I missing somebody? Everybody else is here. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six. We have eight. We're missing three. We have eight members. We have a quorum. Does any member of council have anything that you would like to discuss off the top?
You missed number five, sir.
What's that?
You missed number five.
Agenda review? Oh, sorry. Thank you very much.
Agenda review.
Okay. Hello, York. Welcome. Let's review our agenda for the council meeting. I have a request, and that is that I'm going to ask, hopefully without objection, that we move item 12 from the agenda. Item 12 is second reading of an ordinance for 2022 transportation sales tax referendum. And the reason I'm asking to remove this during the course of the evening, we're going to be presented with some information, and we're probably going to discuss a lot about an alternative, which is a greenways tax as an alternative, not an addition. I don't know where this discussion is going to come out, but I'm asking at this point that item 12 be removed from the agenda. And I'm going to ask that we add to the agenda a green space ordinance. This will be, by the way, if we pass this, it would be by title only, a green space ordinance. And that will require a motion of second and two thirds vote. We're going to hear a lot about this green space ordinance tonight, probably from Senator Tom Davis.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, I'm a little hesitant to remove the one item from the agenda. I think since it arrives at us with, to us tonight with a vote, positive vote at second reading, if I recall correctly. This is third and final reading. We really need to resolve this matter. I think we can leave it on the agenda. If we find we can't resolve the matter tonight and would like to delay it for further information or whatever. I think an up or down vote or some member, some resolution to the citizens of Beaufort County probably is required. And so I would suggest you leave that item on the agenda and add the secondary item as the next one down to be discussed after that is resolved or even before that is resolved. So that, so that at least we get some idea whether it's an up or down vote. I imagine once we get through the green space initiative question that you have, the matter of the sales tax will be relatively easy to resolve. And it's going to need a vote, one way or the other, sir.
Can we remove, do we, can we vote in caucus on this? Do we have to wait until the council meeting to vote on this?
Yeah, I just want to make sure my point is clear, Paul. At some point, we have, we have an item that will need to be resolved. You can't leave stuff unfinished. And I understand it doesn't necessarily have to be tonight that that gets resolved. But you can't leave it out there forever. There's something on the, on the table. It needs to be moved appropriately to be taken off.
Right. So I agree with, I agree with Councilman Flueeling.
Okay, that's fine.
A couple of things, though. At this point, caucus meeting, you're just talking about the agenda for the meeting itself. So it's not appropriate, I don't think, really, to take a vote on it. So I think, you know, you can talk about it and talk about what you're going to talk about when you get to that item during the council meeting. Okay? Number one. Number two, Brian, did I hear you say that this is third reading? Because I think it's actually second, second reading.
Second reading was postponed.
Second reading was postponed. So it's still second.
That's all right.
Okay?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Tom, a question. Would it be inappropriate to postpone this to the next meeting as a result of removal from the agenda?
Well, nothing's been removed from the agenda.
I know that.
Yeah.
But as a suggestion in the motion to postpone it rather than just remove it, but place it for the next meeting.
So I think what's going to have to happen with regard to item 12 is this. Ordinarily, when there's an item on a council agenda that the chairman or others want to remove, typically the chairman says, there's some interest in removing item number 12 from the agenda. If there's no objection, we'll remove it, subject to the fact that there's no objection. Okay? And typically, there's no objection. What I hear from Councilman Flueeling is that that's not going to be the case here. So the fact that the agenda has already been posted, I think someone's going to, if whoever, if somebody wants to remove item 12 from it, then someone's going to have to make a motion to remove it.
Right.
It's going to have to be seconded.
Right.
And you're going to have to get a majority vote to remove it. Otherwise, it's going to stay on the agenda.
Could the motion include removal and postponement for further consideration at a definite time?
I think it could. I mean, you could do that in the ordinary course when it gets called up.
Okay.
God, sorry. God. I would say the easiest way to go about it then is if we decide to put the new motion on the table, we should put it between number 11 and 12. So we talk about green space before 12. Because that's going to dictate what we decide to do with 12. And if we move forward with the new 12, which would push 12 down to 13, then there would be no question about removing number 12 from the agenda.
That's exactly my point, and that is exactly what I was trying to get around.
Once the agenda is approved, you can still have a motion to remove it?
Once the agenda is approved?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I would think the motion wouldn't be to remove it. I think the motion would be to postpone it or
That makes sense.
Pay it or whatever you want to do.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Now we are at, are there any other comments on the agenda? I mean, I just talked about item 12. There may be something else that somebody want to talk about. Including the consent agenda.
Are we adding, you've mentioned adding something to the agenda?
We don't have a motion to add it yet.
When we get to item 11, after we've completed item 11, we're going to ask, somebody's probably going to ask for a, for an off-agenda item to introduce the green space amendment, the green space ordinance by title only. And we'll discuss that between 11 and 12. So when we get to 12, 12 may be a moot point.
And without them?
They're going to renumber the rest of them then? Make one item 12 and the others flow down from that?
Yes.
Everything will be?
Yeah, good point. Yeah, because the green space becomes 11, I'm sorry, becomes 12. And then 12 becomes 13 and so on and so on.
So Mr. Somerville? We have that number nine, though, right?
You're going to have to address that issue when you get to the point in the regular meeting where you're talking about approval of the agenda.
Yeah.
That's when that will happen.
Okay. All right. Anybody other comments on the agenda for council before we move on? Folks online? No?
Just want to make sure Brian is absolutely right, that we need to alter the agenda. And therefore, when we begin the county council meeting, there should be a motion to amend the council meeting to add a specific item, item number 12. New number 12 for the title only for a green space referendum.
Okay.
And then we can take a specific action about item number 12 dependent upon what happens with the quote-unquote new item.
Finally, we make that entry, and if it comes item 12, we're just going to have to renumber. Everything is part of the same procedure.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. That brings us to item six, which I prematurely pointed to. Does anybody want to talk about anything off the cuff? Extemporaneous. Brian, you had your hand up?
Thank you. Yeah, I did. Thank you, Chairman. Eric, I'm wondering if you could talk or have someone talk just briefly about the house out in Chesterfield, that, that there's, you know, another problem that we figure out, have publicly stated what, what we intend to do and how we're going to go about it for the record.
Gerald, are you adjusting your glasses or did you have your hand up?
Good afternoon. So the house at Chesterfield, I'll give you a brief history. A few years ago, the house, we received reports that the house was full of trash, that the roof was caving in, that the backyard was overgrown. And in fact, the tenant, the house was so full of trash, the tenant at that time had moved out of the house and was living in the backyard in tents. And there were miners involved in some issues. So at that time, we took action in accordance with our unfit dwelling ordinance. We sent the required notifications. And once the notifications were sent, the county was in a position to put out for bid to have that condition, if you will, rectified. So we put it out for bid. There was a general contractor who won the bid. They cleaned up the trash in the back, cleaned the house out, repaired the roof. And at that time, the roof was watertight. The drywall was replaced on the ceiling. All of the carpet was removed. Anything that was moldy, anything like that was removed, and that was the condition of the house. So the house sat, the amount, I can't remember, I think it was like $18,000 or $20,000 that we spent to do all of that work was put on the tax bill. And the mortgage company paid that tax bill. Apparently, it was escrowed, but that tax bill was paid, so the county recovered its money from, from doing that work, which is how the unfit dwelling ordinance says that we have to do that. So now, fast forward some, I don't know, four or five years, we have issues again. The property is overgrown, and a limb has fallen and knocked a hole in the roof once again. So it's leaking. Because it's leaking, it's dilapidated. We're concerned that there's some structural issues with the roof. So we have sent another notice, first notice, which will be followed by two more. And then at that point, the county can put out for bid, hiring a contractor to fix the roof again. And then if that goes all the way through that process and the current owners don't do something to intervene and fix the problem, that amount of money will be put back on the tax bill yet again, and that will remedy the issue. I know one of the, the questions was about the overgrown lot. And staff has discussed this back and forth with our legal, and I'll let legal chime in if they, if they so please. The county cannot go onto private property and cut somebody's yard. So what we did before is we removed debris, trash. It was almost like a landfill in the backyard. So in the public interest, we removed that. We weren't doing landscaping work. At this point, the backyard is overgrown. We send the notices, but we don't have the ability as the county to go in and cut somebody's yard for them. The HOA, we've had discussions with them. There's some discussion about whether that's their responsibility within an HOA, whether they could take legal action. Staff thinks that they most certainly could if they were so inclined. But that, the yard situation is up in the air, and we're moving forward with the notices per our ordinance. So I hope that helps.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chuck, one other thing. Is there anything you need from us to facilitate this?
No, sir, not at all. So the ordinance is very specific. You send the notice. We post the notice on the second go-around to the door, which we will do. There's a 60-day time where folks have the opportunity to reply. If they don't, then we just move right through the ordinance. And there are bullet points that we have to follow.
Thanks. And you have the mailing address signs provided to you before?
We do, yes, sir. And the one that you sent us and the one that we had on record, I think we sent notifications to both addresses, which we will continue to do.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70, discussion of negotiations incidents proposed contractual arrangements and proposed purchase slash acquisition of real property, Fusky Ferry, Melrose Landing Road. And pursuant to SC Code 30-4-70, discussion of negotiations incidents proposed contractual arrangements and proposed purchase acquisition of real property, Helmsman Way. And pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-4-70, receipt of legal advice where the advice relates to pending claims which are covered by the attorney-client privilege. This is Malloy litigation. I need a motion to go into executive session for those three clauses. So move, Mr. Chairman. Second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, without objection, we will enter executive session. Objections?
Fort Fremont closes out a 350-year legacy of coastal fortifications in Port Royal Sound, beginning in the mid-16th century. It also represents the closing chapter of America's coastal defense system before the dawn of air power. Fort Fremont is an example of the most advanced military technology of its time. It would parallel the B-17, an aircraft carrier of World War II, the F-35 of today. Fort Fremont was an important part of the Beaufort culture, very similar to Paris Island and the Marine Corps Air Base today.
In 1525, the Spaniards named this sound and this harbor Santa Elena. They called the navigational point La Punta de Santa Elena, the Point of Santa Elena. And what the Spanish explorers discovered is that Port Royal Sound is a unique piece of geography. It's the deepest natural harbor south of the Chesapeake Bay, possibly south of New York. The channel into Port Royal Sound, this I find a remarkable geological fact. The channel has not changed for 500 years. There's no inlet on the southern coast that hasn't shifted entirely in 500 years, except Port Royal Sound. There's something geologically different, or one might say magical, about Port Royal Sound. So Spanish sailors, being the best in the world in their time, found this place very early, knew that for the Spanish explorations, the American southeast, this would be the entra, the entrance. And so they built a city across the river, across the sound from where we are on Paris Island that became the first capital of Florida. And they explored the back country from this location for more than a century with the object of building a highway from this magnificent harbor to Mexico City. So the sound was known to the Spaniards. It was known to the French, who actually got here first and created the first Protestant colony in the New World on Paris Island over my shoulder. And that colony was a failure. The Spaniards replaced them. It was part of Spanish Florida when the English arrived, 150 years later. And this was, became as a consequence, a battleground in the 18th century between Spanish interests in Florida and St. Augustine and the English colony in Carolina and in Charleston. And back and forth these wars went, many of them naval wars, many of them employing, as all the sailors knew by then, the magic of Port Royal Sound. When the Civil War came, Confederates defended the harbor, but it was basically indefensible against large naval forces. So the U.S. Navy made it their principal target during the beginning of the Civil War and sent the largest flotilla of ships assembled by the United States Navy in the 19th century into Port Royal Sound on November 7th, 1861. In a four-hour cannonade, which would have been deafening from where we're sitting, was heard for miles from Savannah nearly to Charleston. It was called the Day of the Big Gun Shoot. During the Civil War, this harbor that we're looking at was filled with ships. There would be hundreds of ships in this harbor. There was a thousand-foot dock with a railroad on top off of Hilton Head. The military installation was mammoth. There were 13,000 U.S. soldiers on Hilton Head, which we're looking at, the largest population on Hilton Head until 1974. So this was a major U.S. government installation in the heart of the South. It was the headquarters of the U.S. Army Department of the South. But more importantly, it was the headquarters of the United States Navy's South Atlantic Blockading Squadron. So the biggest ships in the Navy were here. And so it became, and that's really where the story of Fort Fremont starts, with that huge Civil War military operations and installations on Hilton Head, on St. Helena Island, on Paris Island, and in Beaufort.
After the Civil War, we're going to see a massive change in technology that's going to revolutionize the military. During the Civil War, we had ironclad ships. We had rifled cannons, but they were all made out of iron, and they were not terribly effective. But its technology is going to change after the Civil War. We're going to see steel produced, and steel is much harder. So now we have a new material to make armor out of for ships, so we can have these armored ships made with steel that are much more resistant to the shot. Because I have steel, I can make stronger barrels for my guns. I can rifle and machine these much better. And the rifling is the spirals that are cut in the barrel allows it to shoot further with more accuracy. And we can also now have breech-loading guns that can lock from behind, so I can load my gun from behind. I don't have to go to the old black powder muzzle-loading cannon that I had before. Now I can fire much more rapidly. If I compare the gun of 1890 to the guns of 1860 for the same caliber, the same diameter gun, the 1890 gun will be able to fire projectile as four times heavier, can shoot it three times further, can put it in with greater precision, and can put it through much more armor than anything we had in 1860. It's a world difference. A military historian, E.R. Lewis, would say that the change between the Civil War and 1890 in artillery technology was the greatest that would be seen since invention of artillery in the 14th century to the introduction of the nuclear projectile in the 1950s. So there's been a huge change in gun technology. And at the same time, it's not just the steel, but also the powder that fires these guns is different. We have new chemical makeup. And sort of like cordite is invented now, and it's still a widely-used military explosive even today. Smokeless powder is invented during this period of time. And it's not just chemical composition, but it's the details of how you make the grain, how fast they burn. So much like the skill of firing a solid rocket, solid fuel rocket, it's that same kind of technology that's been developed in these gunpowder, in this new powder. So our weapons of this day are much, much greater. They would be the great killing machines of World War I. Most of casualties on the battlefields of World War I would come from artillery. So the world has seen a huge change in artillery, and that's tied into changes in ships. We now have steel armored ships. They're all steam-powered. They are now equipped with these fine, long-range guns, and they now become the dominant threat of the late 19th, early 20th century. This is the threat. The French and English would bombard cities like Cairo and reduce them to rubble because they were unable to defend them. So this is how the world was seeing the threat from this new technology. Big battleships are the threat of the era, and new guns and fortifications on the ground. Big battleships are the threat of the era, and new guns and fortifications on the ground are what you have to have to defend against them.
One of the most important and first things that happened after the Civil War is they built a railroad to Port Royal Sound, which didn't exist. It was the first connection of the sea islands to the mainland. The advantage of that railroad is it brought coal to Port Royal Sound. So when the coal was delivered, the Navy followed.
In 1872, Robert Smalls was in the South Carolina Legislature, and he pushed through a resolution to the Secretary of War calling for them to put a Navy station on Paris Island. And eventually, he would go on to Congress where he would continue his support for a Navy station here in the Beaufort-Port Royal area. They eventually opened a Navy station here and a coaling station.
They created in the 1890s on Paris Island, the largest dry dock in the United States. This is the period when the US Navy was switching from sail to steam. All the navies of the world needed a coaling station. This was the principal coaling station, because of the railroad, for the Caribbean and South American US fleets.
This would be the biggest dry dock south of Norfolk. In fact, it is the only dry dock south of Norfolk, Virginia, that's capable of taking these new modern battleships and these new modern armored cruisers. So this becomes, at this point, a strategic Navy base in that it provides coal and it provides top-line support to the ships, and they can repair the hulls of even the biggest ships in the US Navy. Following the Civil War, national strategy and emphasis in the United States shifted from recovery from war, and all of our coastal fortifications went into neglect. The military was busy taming the West, and coastal defenses became something that was no longer important. And the rest of the world, technology is moving forward, and they're developing these battleships, they're developing new high-quality artillery, and this is going on worldwide. And in 1885, President Grover Cleveland appointed Endicott Board. This was headed by Secretary of War Endicott, William Endicott. And the board would meet and issue a report in 1886, and they said the conditions of our coastal defenses were just unbearable, they cannot be allowed to stay like that. And they made recommendations for fortification and improvements. They identified 29 places that needed fortifications, and 11 of which were critical. In that list of 29, Savannah and Charleston are on the list, but Beaufort is not on the list. It'll take international events to bring Beaufort into the play of modern fort technology.
So the USS Maine was here on patrol and in the harbor, and while they were in the harbor several times, they entertained the local population. So the merchants and the social leaders and the political leaders of Beaufort were invited to come have lunch with the captain of the ship, Captain Sigsby. And the officers got to know the people, the people got to know the officers. The crew, which was large, would go ashore on payday and make friends with everybody in town. So it was a very social arrangement between the towns, Port Royal and Beaufort, and the ship. So the Maine left here, it went and re-provision, it refueled in Key West, and then went the 90 miles across to Havana, into the harbor, and blew up.
This inflamed the already hot passions both in Cuba and here in the United States. At that point, somebody in the War Department realized that we had this big dry dock, the only dry dock in the South that could take on and repair these big capital ships that were in our Navy. We were going to start operations against a power in the Caribbean, and this fort was totally undefended. And that's what put Fort Fremont on the map. We had to have a fort here to defend the coaling station, and especially this big dry dock, as well as this fine harbor that's here.
And of course, that event, which killed 300 or more sailors on the ship, was very much followed by the local news media and very much lamented by the many friends that the crew had made here. The destruction of the USS Maine was a personal matter to Beaufort and to Port Royal Sound. And of course, it was the Spanish-American War and the attempt to defend this harbor again, which led to the creation of Fort Fremont. The United States declared war on Spain in April, 1898.
And by early May, we had temporary batteries in place here, submarine mines were in place, and in the summer, they would actually place the mines across the Beaufort River behind me. The temporary batteries were a temporary expedient. They were located to my left, about 1,000 yards. They immediately began construction of what would become Fort Fremont, the large batteries with, housed the large guns. Battery Fornance, the rapid-fire guns, the smaller battery was completed by June of 1898.
In 1898, everybody in town went to war. They had a naval militia unit, South Carolina Naval Militia Unit, and they were absorbed by the Navy. Many of them ran tugboats from here to New York to Key West, which was the principal support base, Tampa and Key West, for the US Army operations in Cuba.
Peace was declared by the end of 1898, and the remainder of Fort Fremont would not be finished until early 1899, and the first soldiers would arrive from the regular Army at that point, in March 1899.
Well, Fort Fremont was named for Major General John Fremont. He was actually a local boy, so to speak. He was born and grew up in Savannah, Georgia, just south of us, and went to college in the College of Charleston, just north of us in Charleston. He served in the Army and primarily initially as a explorer, as Army forts were generally named for Army officers, and he was connected locally. This is more than likely why the fort was named for him.
The fort was constructed on a site directly across the river from the Paris Island Naval Station. And the site selected was 170 acres, which included the two artillery batteries. Fort Fremont, of course, had Battery Fornace and Battery Jessup. But then adjacent to the battery site was an administrative quadrangle, a very typical military-type administrative square.
We are sitting in the number three gun position of a three-gun battery, Battery Jessup, which had three 10-inch disappearing carriage, large-caliber guns, breech-loading guns. Their purpose was to engage the warships that might be entering the harbor and Port Royal Sound. We're here now at the second battery that was part of Fort Fremont. This is Battery Fornance, was named for an Army officer that was actually killed during the Spanish-American War, during the Battle of San Juan Hill. Battery Fornance mounted two British-made 4.72-inch Armstrong Quickfire guns. They were called Quickfire because they loaded, were loaded with a complete cartridge, and it, in time of action, they could fire four to six rounds per minute. The purpose of Battery Fornance was to defend the minefield, which was the other component of the Endicott Coast artillery or coast defense system. A minefield with controlled mines, controlled meaning that they were connected electrically to shore and could be fired on command from shore. That control station would have been probably shared with the plotting room. And in order to protect the minefield, obviously, an enemy would want to interfere with that, might send vessels, small ships in here at night to try to interfere, and this battery would take those vessels under fire if there was some, there was suspected that they were doing something to interfere with the mines, such as pulling up the cables and cutting those.
The Endicott-era fort was a formidable technology. It represented state-of-the-art technology, defense technology of its time against the state-of-the-art threat, which would be the battleship.
The life for the soldiers at Fort Fremont was disciplined and regimented. They even had, meal times were specified lengths of time, 15 minutes for lunch, 15 minutes at breakfast, 20 minutes at supper. They had to practice their skills, they were training and doing maintenance constantly. If you can imagine, with these big guns, they had to have skills in, and practice the skills in artillery, mine-laying, signaling, which involved, in our case, at Fort Fremont, the use of the fire control tower, which was a pretty sophisticated and advanced signaling technique. Then they also had to practice the typical military skills, marching and drilling, small arms fire, first aid, and so forth. In addition to that, they also had, participated in athletics. They had physical training, PT, and they also had sports teams. So this was to keep them physically fit so that they could continue their duties because they were, it was pretty rigorous at Fort Fremont.
When eventually the decision was made to move the dry dock and the coaling station and the Navy station up to Charleston, then this fort no longer became significant. There was nothing left here that was to be protected. And at that point, 1911, the last troops were transferred out and the fort was closed.
In 1901, the mayor of Charleston and the United States Senator Pitchfork Ben Tillman from South Carolina wanted this to move from Beaufort County to Charleston County, because there are more votes in Charleston County. And the mayor wanted the US Corps of Engineers and the Navy to dredge the harbor in Charleston, because battleships in those days required 26 feet of water. Charleston's natural harbor is 15 feet of water. Port Royal is 30 feet of water. In order for Charleston to sustain its port, its commercial port, it had to dredge the harbor. Well, if they could get the Navy up there, they'd get the Corps of Engineers to dredge the harbor. That was the play. And the play for Pitchfork Ben Tillman, the US Senator in 1900, was that he'd get a whole lot more votes from the largest city in South Carolina. So it was a political, commercial operation, and they moved the nation, and it was done boom like that.
The fort did its job, a deterrent for anybody that wished to attack these. It provided protection. In fact, the whole Endicott system, although never challenged in this era here in the United States, provided some 300 major guns, coastal guns, to protect major areas, and left the United States at the beginning of the 20th century with as well-defended coastline as anyplace in the world.
But I would just like to say that it's a magnificent artifact of an era. And it's an era that has been neglected, the turn of the 20th century, the naval station across the river here. And so it's a, it's a piece of history that's disappearing, and the Friends of Fort Fremont and Beaufort County have preserved it for the use of the public and as a memorial to that moment in history.
Fort Fremont closes a 350-year story of homeland security addressing European imperialism in the 19th century. It's a tale of how geography, technology, and national security creates a transition for America to become a global power. It's also a wonderful snapshot of America in the beginning of the 20th century. The Friends of Fort Fremont and Beaufort County have a valued partnership, working in tandem to preserve the fort's integrity and promote the historical, natural, and cultural aspects of the fort. Most important, we are always looking for creative ways to enhance visitor experience.
It's civilization versus nature's fury. Raging blizzards bury cities under thousands of tons of snow. Howly hurricanes tear apart coastal communities with wind and rain, and flash floods wipe entire towns off the face of the earth. As the skies clear, people begin to pick up the pieces. But after the storm, insidious damage is still being done. Our most vital natural resource is under assault, our nation's waters.
We're at the Chattahoochee Nature Center, and we're trying to find out what a watershed is. First victim. I need you to tell me what a watershed is. Do you have any idea?
Watershed?
A watershed?
Where people go to the bathroom?
Sweating, I guess.
Something to do with sweating?
Uh-huh.
Like after you run, when you?
You perspire, yeah.
And then you shed it?
Uh-huh.
We wanted to ask you if you knew what a watershed was.
A watershed?
Yeah.
Is it kind of like the rain?
Do you know what a watershed is?
A shed that holds water.
Come here for a second, I want to ask you something. Do you know what a watershed is?
No.
No? Do you have any idea? What do you think it has something to do with?
Uh, I don't know.
What a watershed is? Yeah. That's just a drain pool, I guess you'd say, or the drain area, that's where the water, the rainwater drains into the river.
Correct, that's a great answer.
A watershed is that area of land that drains to a body of water, be that if it's a river, a stream, the ocean, an estuary, a bay. Wherever you live, drains to some water body, and you live in a watershed, so everyone lives in a watershed.
And in this modern industrial age, our water sources are becoming more contaminated with each passing year.
The biggest water quality problem that we have in the nation today is polluted runoff.
All water east of the Continental Divide drains to the Atlantic, while water west of the Divide flows to the Pacific. And one drop of rain can cross many different watersheds along the way. As runoff flows into rivers, streams, and storm drains, the water picks up trash, dirt, bacteria, toxic chemicals, and fertilizers, creating a soup of pollutants that is extremely hazardous to the environment. And the consequences of polluted runoff exist worldwide.
The UN estimate is that there's about a billion people on the planet right now who don't have adequate access to fresh water.
97% of all water on Earth is salty ocean water. Of the remaining 3%, it's fresh. Over 2/3 is frozen in glaciers and polar ice. That leaves less than 1% of all the planet's water for our use.
I predict in the future that some of the US water needs are going to come through pipeline because we have just overused our supply.
To address the complex threats facing US water resources, the Environmental Protection Agency recommends adopting a watershed approach.
We're trying to reconnect some of the river.
It's a method that looks at each watershed for its own unique set of environmental challenges and solutions.
In many cases, people mistakenly identify large discharge pipes in the water as the problem, but that may not be the problem. It may be coming from agricultural runoff. It may be coming from stormwater runoff over parking lots and impervious surfaces. Every watershed is different, and you need to look at each watershed in its own terms, and then think systematically about how you remediate, how you clean up that watershed.
In California, the Santa Monica Bay watershed drains a dangerous amount of polluted runoff after each storm.
When it rains, literally, the whole residue of urban living ends up getting washed into the storm drain system, and ends up going straight into the bay on Santa Monica Bay's beaches with no treatment whatsoever.
It's actually like a giant toilet flushing, because all of the pollution, the dog mess has been building up and building up and building up. When it rains, it just flushes into the storm drain and goes directly into the surf.
In 1996, the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission approved In 1996, the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission proved there was a link between the contaminated runoff in the Santa Monica Bay and reports of illness afflicting people who swim there.
What we did find was at the outlets of storm drains, no matter where they were up and down the bay, if there was a flow of runoff into the surf zone, those people that were swimming in those areas definitely experienced higher incidences of illnesses.
The pollutants in the water affect surfers because we're actually the indicator species with all the pollutants. When we are in the waters, we're ingesting it through our skin and our mouth, even if people don't take a swallow of water, it's still getting into our systems, our ears, any orifice in your body. And it causes infections, it can cause colds, sore throats, at the very least.
I wouldn't want to swim in, you know, water that's got those diseases in there, you know, just floating around, making more diseases.
I've seen it pretty much as bad as it can be. I've seen crap floating out in the water, literally.
Generically, we call it fecal coliform. More specifically, you might know of it as E. coli, Salmonella, or Enterococcus, whatever's in poop.
There's times when it tastes funky, for sure.
Every day, the city and county of Los Angeles perform a battery of tests to keep the public informed about water quality in the Santa Monica Bay. Cesar Arzadon begins the monitoring process each morning by taking a series of coastline water samples. Then it's back to the lab for analysis.
Most of the bacteria that you're going to see, it comes from feces. And when you put it under the UV light, you're going to see a different kind of color. It's a fluorescent sign that there is a bacteria and then it's called E. coli. That one definitely is feces from animals, or it could be humans also.
The results are reported to the Health Department and beach warnings are posted as necessary.
The number of beach postings has decreased and 85% of the beaches that have been monitored in California have received either A or B grades. And that's significantly different than four years ago.
But while progress is being made in California, the harmful effects of polluted runoff are a growing concern everywhere. So what can the average person do to help reduce pollution in our watersheds?
How you apply pesticides or not in your garden, how you wash your cars, making sure that you don't throw cigarette butts out onto the street.
Do not dump things on the ground, especially oils or any chemical pollutants. Pick up after your dogs. A lot of people don't realize how important that is. And just be a conscientious citizen and don't leave anything on the ground.
I think one person can make a difference and it needs to make the difference. If not you, who?
Coming up.
We're heading for what's known as an ecosystem collapse.
Can the Gulf of Mexico be saved from polluted runoff? It was a flood of apocalyptic scale. Twenty-six thousand square miles of the Lower Mississippi Valley inundated by water, more than 200 lives lost, and 600,000 people displaced from their homes. The flood of 1927 was the most disastrous in US history and its effects are still felt today. After the flood of '27, massive levees were put in place. And while they helped protect the Lower Mississippi River basin from flooding, the levees and other human activities would ultimately harm the watershed in unforeseen ways. The Gulf state of Louisiana is the terminus of the Mississippi River, the mighty watershed that drains 41% of the area of the lower 48 states into the Gulf of Mexico.
We receive water from as far away as Montana, Michigan, to Pennsylvania, Ohio, Iowa. All those waters drain right past this area right here.
But by the time all that water enters the Gulf, it has accumulated enough contaminants from polluted runoff to create an enormous hypoxic zone, an area of water lacking in vital oxygen.
The size of the low-oxygen zone in the Gulf of Mexico is about 9,000 square miles. That's equal to the size of the state of New Jersey.
The shortage of oxygen is killing fish and other sea life and could potentially have a devastating effect on the regional economy.
We are the largest navigation port in the United States. We are the second largest in the world. We have the largest fisheries in this country.
When we was crabbing, a lot of times all our crabs we did, we can't even sell them.
The reason hypoxia should be of concern to most citizens in this nation is because it's a sign. It's a sign of the degradation of our water resources. We're heading for what's known as an ecosystem collapse.
If you're going to have an ecological disaster caused by the offshore hypoxic areas, then that absolutely translates into an economic disaster.
So what exactly is causing this dead zone in the Gulf? Hypoxia develops when an area of water receives excess pollutants, primarily an overabundance of nutrients, which produce large algae blooms that die off and lead to low oxygen. And since the Mississippi gets fed by tributaries that flow through 31 states, that adds up to a staggering volume of contaminated runoff.
You have drainage into the Gulf of Mexico from the Ohio River, the Mississippi River, and the Missouri River. Yet each of those three major river systems are watersheds in and of themselves with their own challenges and their own problems.
The Mississippi River has always delivered a lot of water and that hasn't changed over the centuries. What's changed is the amount of nutrients in that water.
In fact, the Mississippi's nitrogen levels in the Lower Mississippi River have tripled since the 1950s. And the growing hypoxic zone off the Louisiana coast contains the disturbing evidence.
It's like a rusty color, stanky, rotten-looking. You see fish just swimming sideways, gasping for air and stuff like that. And when you pull up the nets, not one shrimp alive, all dead, orange. The fish, they, they rotten, like melting away and stuff like that, can't breathe, stuff. And it's just rotten.
This is just a fact of, of life, the way we treat our water systems because we use them as our garbage dumps. We use them to dilute our pollutants and things like that and it flows downstream. I believe the statistic is that if you're in New Orleans, the water that is going by you has passed through a human gut something like three or four times before it gets to you.
Incredibly, Louisiana boasts a natural resource that removes pollutants from the draining Mississippi, the once abundant wetlands.
Plants that grow in wetlands produce these wonderful filters for everything that is coming into them. They trap sediment, they chem- chemicals, and what leaves the wetlands is much, much cleaner water.
Wetlands also provide an important habitat for birds and other wildlife. Sadly, the Louisiana wetlands are quickly disappearing.
Coastal Louisiana has lost about 1.2 million acres of wetlands in the last 100 years. When we levied off the Mississippi, it cut off the Mississippi River water from the marshes.
In addition to the levees, a network of man-made navigation channels is also compromising the wetlands by allowing salt water to seep into the marshes.
Once that salt water travels up these channels and overflows the banks of these channels out into freshwater systems such as the Cypress Swamp, that salt water sits out there around the roots of these trees and kills them. They cannot survive salt water, they're freshwater plants.
Eliminating the hypoxic zone will take more than saving our wetlands. Reducing nutrient runoff in the Mississippi River watershed is the heart of the problem. It's an issue involving over half the states in the nation and a vast array of industries, particularly farming, which uses nitrogen-rich fertilizer to grow its crops.
Fertilizers are helping the United States produce the food for the world, but there is such a thing as, as overuse.
There are scientists who have done the analyses and predict that you could reduce fertilizers by about 12% without reducing crop production and see a significant decrease in the amount of nitrogen going into the Mississippi River.
Experts say the first key to changing behavior is raising public awareness.
We all live downstream of somebody and we all live upstream of somebody. So what somebody else does in their watershed affects the water that I receive and what I do in my watershed affects the water that somebody else receives downstream.
If we don't clean up our act, our water resources, which we simply cannot live without, will be ruined. Coming up, can the water supply for nine million New Yorkers be saved from the ravages of polluted runoff? In January of 1996, one of the most devastating winter storms in history slams the East Coast. Two feet of snow dumps on New York and throughout the Northeast Corridor. Schools, airports, and roads are shut down. By the time it's over, the blizzard and resultant flooding caused $3 billion in losses and 187 lives are taken. And in the Catskill Mountains of upstate New York, the snowmelt triggers another potentially devastating crisis. Stormwater runoff contaminated with trash, dirt, fertilizers, and pesticides from nearby farms and communities threatens the freshwater supply. And the Catskill system of reservoirs is vitally important, for it is the biggest watershed of New York City, providing drinking water to over nine million people.
The miracle of the city's water supply system is largely unknown to most New Yorkers. You ask people, where does the water come from? Often people shrug their shoulders and say, New Jersey.
I figured that we were probably our own separate water system then from upstate. I'd rather be drinking water from upstate than the Hudson River.
I don't know that most people are aware of how large the problem is and how close to crisis many of our water supply systems are.
To preserve the purity of the reservoirs and enforce the Safe Drinking Water Act, the Environmental Protection Agency presented the Big Apple with two options. Either build and maintain a $6 billion facility to filter all of the city's tap water, or fund a $1 billion program to protect the watershed from polluted runoff.
When it comes to our investment in clean air and clean water, preserving open space, fixing antiquated sewage treatment plants, we can't wait. It doesn't get any less expensive, it gets more expensive.
With the historic watershed agreement of 1997, an unprecedented upstate-downstate partnership was forged to protect the New York City water supply.
The watershed agreement is saving New York City billions of dollars.
The plan includes purchasing and preserving 355,000 acres of undeveloped watershed land, the upgrading of sewage treatment plants, and the protection and restoration of stream corridors.
What we're looking at here is a main tributary of the Asopus Creek. During flooding, we were seeing a lot of sediment coming out of the stream. The clay gets into the water column and it becomes very turbid and then it makes it very difficult to treat and clean that water. So from a water quality perspective, we're very concerned about erosion.
The program also provides funding for farmers that implement agriculture management practices.
Well, we have a very exciting program with the Watershed Agricultural Council where we are working with local farmers. We look at how they're handling the animals so that the runoff associated with manure, fertilizer, and that, that farm activity isn't getting into the, the streams around our reservoirs.
This water here is basically the water you're going to be drinking down in the city. And I feel I've got a responsibility to try my best to keep it clean for when it gets down there. It used to be when it rained here on the farm, the water that ran away from the, the back of the barn here was full of mud, manure, and it would just run brown and right into the stream. Two years ago, we would spread every day. We'd have to take it out, spread it on the fields. If the snow was deep, we spread it on the snow and unfortunately, if the ground was froze when the snow melted, the nutrient value of it for fertilizer was gone and wound up down in the reservoir.
With New York City funding, a secure, above-ground steel tank that can hold 400,000 gallons of manure was installed on the Meadowbrook Farm.
That's enough storage for six months of the year. Now we can store it, spread it, when it'll do the most good to us for fertilizer and we don't have to spread it every day.
I worked with Tim on the plan to develop the improvements we're going to make. Plan really belongs to the farmer and it's a collaboration of their ideas and what technical advice we can bring to the program. But the farmer makes the decision.
It's a program that seems to make everybody happy.
Here's to the, the farmers who are working so hard to make sure we've got clean water to put in our coffee.
To guarantee the city's water supply is fresh at the tap, comprehensive tests are performed by the New York City Department of Environmental Protection, both in the lab and at over 1,000 sampling stations throughout the city.
New York City has probably one of the most extensive water quality monitoring programs in the nation, if not the world.
We're sampling every day, 365 days a year. I've been drinking this water for 53 years, nothing else. That's water in the world, New York City, straight from the tap to my lips.
And we're going to start up in just a few minutes our council session.
Wait, I don't think that's into these negotiations, it's actually to initiate...
There, you're going to make the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
For adjournment. The executive session is terminated. I said it once earlier, but apparently I was muted, so I'm going to scream it, it's over. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June County Council meeting. I'd like you to please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm sorry, join Councilman Flueeling for the Pledge of Allegiance and the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the gifts you've given us, but especially for this beautiful place you've created us to call home and all that you have provided for us. But we pray for our brothers and sisters who don't have a place to sleep tonight, for those who have lost loved ones and those who are sick or afraid tonight. We ask that you relieve their suffering. Father, please bless this assembly. We ask that you guide us in doing your will and lead us safely home. We ask all this through your holy name. Amen.
Amen. All right, public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I need a motion to approve or to amend the agenda.
So moved, Chairman.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right. Do we have a?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, the audio is coming in.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, the audio is coming in very faint for the room there. If you could please turn that off or plug the mic back in, do whatever you need to do.
Is it just me, or is it the whole?
It seems to be still a live feed from the executive conference room.
I think that just got closed out. Yeah. Oh, nope, there it is.
That just happened.
All right. Do we have a motion to change the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. In consideration of additional information that has recently been received by council that we hope to have discussion on tonight, I would like to insert at item number 12, a motion to include on the agenda a discussion regarding the green space ordinance, the proposed green space ordinance. And I would then like to renumber all of the items flowing after number 12 and make item 13, I'm sorry, make number 12 13, and make 13 14, 14 15, 15 16, 16 17, and 17 number 18.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
This will require a supermajority? No, it doesn't. Simple majority. All right. I think it does require a supermajority.
It requires two-thirds, but.
Does it? Okay, thank you.
Your motion is to amend the agenda to include by title only an ordinance or amendments to levy taxes for purposes of green space.
Green space, that's right. All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have any discussion before we vote? Just. Yes, sir. I do believe that the new number 12 and the old number 12 are related, so hopefully we can discuss those together. Okay? Anybody else? Hearing none. I'll call a question on the motion. All in favor, please so indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous, I think. Did I miss anybody? Objection? Okay, that is unanimous. The agenda is unanimously amended. That brings us to the Administrator's Report. Mr. Greenway?
No. Wait a minute. No, you now. You amended the agenda. We have to vote on the amended agenda.
Ah, thank you.
Then vote on the minutes.
Thank you very much. We need a, now we need a motion on the amended agenda. Do I have a motion on the amended agenda? Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. We will approve the agenda without objection. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the amended agenda is hereby approved. Mr. Greenway?
No, we need the minutes approved.
There are no minutes.
We do? I didn't see it. That's all right.
There are no minutes to be approved.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, there you go. Mr. Greenway, you still have the floor, whether you want it or not. Tell us something.
Well, I want to, for this part, because again, to introduce you all to three of our very capable and talented employees that make up our team. Our first person this evening is unable to attend. They work at the Hilton Head Island Airport. And of course, it was a long, so long trek from Hilton Head here just to be introduced for a couple of minutes. So I certainly understand that. A person named David Lilly, he is the Senior Airport Operations Officer. He's been with us 17 and a half years. I find that phenomenal on this particular day and time in this environment for employment. He works with the airport rescue and firefighting team, which is responsible to protect life in the event of an aircraft mishap. As a senior officer, David is the leader of the team and is responsible to the director for the proper training and preparation so they can fulfill the strict requirements that are prescribed by 43 CFR Part 139. I'm assuming that's an FAA reg. The ARFF plays a key role in the success of the airport. This next part, David and I might have to have a conversation about it because you all know that I'm an avid Duke College basketball fan. David is an avid University of Kentucky fan. Even one of the shower curtains at the ARFF fire station is UK branded. We might have to have a chat about, you know, what we're hanging up in the fire department. But his personal time is spent with his wife, and children are playing golf. So let's give David a round of applause. Terry Geithner? Come on up.
Is the microphone on or does it sound?
I hope it's on. I will stand closer. How about that? Okay. This is Terry Geithner. He's with our Disabilities and Special Needs Department. It doesn't sound right.
Yeah, it's good.
It's good now? Okay. He is our Day Program Director of Adult Services. He's been with us almost seven years now, six years and 10 months. He does a lot of things for us at DSN, including orchestrating and facilitating the daily operations of the program that consist of 34 staff and, on average, around 100 to 150 consumers that attend the program. With the assistance of others, he manages a fleet of vehicles to transport consumers to and from their homes, as well as to their designated work sites. The many facets of their day-to-day operations simply cannot be accomplished without the backbone and dedication of his training supervisors and the direct support staff. He does a lot of functions, does a lot of work. He served in the U.S. Marine Corps and U.S. Coast Guard. While with the Coast Guard, it was recognized that he had extensive aquatic experience and credentials, including being a diving instructor for 19 years. As a result, he was sent to the U.S. Navy diving facility to become one of 52 divers in the world of the Coast Guard. The unique part of this story is that his class was the last to ever be trained in the old Mark V diving gear, or as is commonly referred to, the old hard hat brigade. Is that the diving gear that's got the bubble thing that comes on?
Brass helmet.
Okay, all right. If you ever saw the movie Men of Honor with Cuba Gooding, this film portrays his training as accurately as possible. When fully dressed, the equipment weighed more than 184 pounds. No doubt, you always needed a dive tender to assist with everything. He would not share this with his old drill instructor at Paris Island, but this training was much more difficult than boot camp. I'm going to turn the mic over to you if you want to say a few words to them. And then is somebody here to get a picture of me or not? Okay, not tonight, but go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you all. Real quick, I'm here, but really what needs to be here are the currently 17 individuals that do the backbone work. And as with everywhere, we're short-staffed, and these guys have stood up to the plate and made it happen because the individuals we're serving human lives or working with human lives, and it's a challenge. So my hat's off to them. I commend them for the work that they do and their dedication. Thank you.
Let's give him a round of applause.
Obviously, she works at our detention center. This is Patina Wilson. She's a corporal with us. She's been with us for five years. She is responsible for the care, custody, and control of inmates, monitoring high-risk and special-need inmates, and those in crisis situations. She received training in the identification of gang members and gang affiliations, and identifies contraband and confiscates dangerous items in an inmate's possession. She is a native of Beaufort County. After graduating from Battery Creek High School in 2007, she joined the U.S. Air Force, where she completed six years as a military police officer. In 2015, she started her criminal justice career at Coastal State Prison in Port Wentworth, Georgia. Wanting to be closer to her family, she moved back to Beaufort and was hired by the Beaufort County Detention Center in 2017. On July 7, 2021, Corporal Wilson's eight-year-old daughter, sitting to her left there on the front row, and her mother were in a terrible car accident. An intoxicated driver veered into their lane, and to avoid hitting the driver, her mother ran off the road and struck a tree. Her daughter suffered a concussion, internal bleeding, and a fractured spine. She spent two weeks at the Medical University of South Carolina, underwent two major surgeries, and was released with a back brace. Corporal Wilson believes in the fervent prayer. She never lost her faith in God and knew that her daughter would be all right. After her daughter's released from the hospital, she was very eager to return to school, even with the back brace on. Thank you for your bravery, young lady. That's an amazing story. Thank you for your service. I'd like you to say a few words, and then we're going to take a picture, and we're going to all clap for you, okay?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to be up here.
Mr. Chairman? That's it? That concludes my report. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. And that brings us to the, our first public comment session of the evening. We have two. And I will say, every member of the public who is recognized to speak, shall limit comments to three minutes, and observe the following protocol. Please address the chairman, and in speaking, avoid disrespect to counsel and any personalities. Confine themselves to questions under the jurisdiction of counsel, and be mindful and respectful of those who are present and others who may be watching on television or live streaming. And we have, we just had another one. First speaker is Jesse White.
You think I have to bring her up? They are wanting to introduce her now. Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you, Jesse White, on behalf of the Coastal Conservation League. I appreciate the opportunity to comment and appreciate counsel amending the agenda to include a discussion of the Green Space Penny Ordinance. We are grateful for Senator Davis's leadership at the State House in creating this new tool to fund conservation at a regional scale. While we recognize that the county's infrastructure is strained, we agree with Senator Davis and others in that the best way to address those strains is by strategic land conservation, not by building more and wider roads. And we applaud Beaufort County for recognizing the value in this program and look forward to participating in the discussions going forward. One of the key features that I wanted to point out about the Green Space Penny program is that it's a regional approach. It's no secret that the Beaufort-Jasper region is growing rapidly, and the effects of that growth impact us all, from the health of our waterways, to the number of cars competing for space on our interconnected roadways, to the loss of significant tree cover and wetland and floodplains. Here in the Low Country, our land and our water are interconnected. Water quality depends upon the surrounding land uses and development patterns. As our green spaces are converted into development, water quality will decline and impact the overall health of our watershed, including both the human and non-human resources that it sustains. It also changes aesthetics, quality of life, and the historic sense of place that define this region. The challenges that come with increased growth and development do not recognize our municipal political boundaries. The ripple effects of large-scale developments in Hardyville and Jasper County are not contained within their borders, but they also flow to Beaufort County residents and resources. The Highway 170 corridor is a prime example of this playing out every day. Through regional cooperation and coordination with our neighboring jurisdictions, the Green Space Penny offers a tool to meet regional growth head-on by pursuing strategic land protection of property that shares regional significance and regional benefits. Land conservation is essential to counterbalancing the incoming growth in our region. Overwhelmingly, residents cite their quality of life and the natural beauty of our coast as the reasons they are moving to this region. Land protection will assure that those resources are protected and the quality of life is enhanced for future generations to come. We are committed to working collaboratively to ensure that the success of a green space program is one that will benefit our shared regional resources and the shared regional values that define this, the Beaufort-Jasper region. We urge you to approve first reading tonight and offer that the governing ordinance specifically include emphasis on regional strains and regional benefits from land protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Robine? Welcome.
Thank you. It feels different to be on this side of the microphone. Good evening. As you've heard many times before, everyone in the audience has, children are our future. Well, as a Beaufort County School Board member, it's part of my charge to ensure that future, their educational future. So I ask you, on third reading tonight, to pass our budget. Our teachers deserve it. You know, our, this entire raise and everything that's in this budget is going to our teachers. We're coming off a rough time. We all are coming off a rough time because of COVID. It's been tough on everyone, our teachers, our students. We need your help. Children are our future, and we need your help to pass our budget to make sure we can continue to give them the future they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Brown?
Thank you. My name is Paula Brown, as some of you may know. I'm very excited to be standing here this evening. As one of the newly elected county council members, I would like to say I am looking forward to working with all of you next January, each and every one of you. But more importantly, I still don't, more importantly, I'm looking forward to working for we, the people of Beaufort, South Carolina. I want to thank you all and look forward to next year.
Congratulations and welcome aboard. Tom Davis, Senator Tom Davis. I know you're back there somewhere. There you are.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief because I think I'll speak a little bit later on the agenda item that's been placed. Is that correct?
Yes.
I did want to point out that the roads fee bill passed both the House and the Senate and was signed into law by the governor. And I want to commend the leadership of Beaufort County Council, in particular Eric Greenway, the administrator, who traveled up to Columbia and testified very eloquently in favor of it, and also Chairman Tasman, who issued a letter along with the chairman of Greenville County Council that I am told was especially influential in the governor signing that legislation. As you know, it had the potential of being catastrophic. It had the potential of not only subjecting the county councils or counties to the arrears claims since 1997, but also to tenfold damages because there's a section of the code that authorizes plaintiffs to recover 10 times any fees or taxes that are improperly levied. So what you were going to be facing was, you know, a group of taxpayers suing the county for a judgment of 10 times the actual damages. The county would then be turning around and taxing the taxpayers in order to pay the other class of taxpayers, with the only winners being the attorneys that skimmed one-third off the top. And so I really think that it was a service to the people of Beaufort County and the people of South Carolina. I think it was the right thing to do, and I commend Beaufort County for taking such a leadership role in making that happen. And on a personal note, I would like to say that we're going to miss Mr. Hervichon, Mr. Rodman, and Mr. Somerville and their service, and particularly Stu and Paul. You guys have been extraordinary, you council members have been extraordinary public servants, and it's no accident that in the last several years, we've been tremendously successful up in the General Assembly in funding some pretty important capital needs. For $120 million from the Hilton Head Bridges, $12 million to the Hilton Head Airport, we can go on and on and on. The Convocation Center at USCV, in large measure because this council was very proactive in giving me and the delegation the materials we needed to make our case to Santa Finance and House Ways and Means, and you guys are going to be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. And are there any, anyone else who is not on the list who wishes to make a public comment? We don't discriminate. You can make the list. You can still speak. No? Okay. That brings us to liaison and committee reports. Are there any committee reports that anybody would like to make or liaison reports? I see a no, no, no one in lots of, I'm sorry, Stu, go ahead.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. On the consent agenda, there's a
One is the approval of a reward for sidewalk work along Reboat Road. It's about 218,000, and I believe that comes out of the 2018 referendum. And one is the approval of the updated solid waste management plan, which is something we have to do periodically as a state requirement that provides a good pathway forward. The other item that I'll speak to is, in public facilities last week, we talked about the access plan for the Beaufort High School. This has been hanging around for a while, and I think the money comes out of the 2018 referendum. And so there's been a series of options that have been looked at over time. As we sorted through all of those, it appeared that there were two kind of emerged as being the primary contenders. And both of them kind of come in from the southeast side of the high school. And so what we said was, okay, let the staff come back with a recommendation on each of those. There were some comments, good comments, made at the meeting that might be considered as those options are worked on. I think there were some subsequent emails about possible ways to do that, but I envision those coming back to us. And the two primary issues are impact on the community and impact on Crystal Lake. And so I look for that to come back in the near future. And my hope would be, as everybody works through it, maybe the two sides and the two groups, the two alternatives can merge. If we're not successful with those two, then we'll go back to the drawing board. But that's kind of an update of where we are on that particular activity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodman. Anyone else on liaisons or committee reports? Okay. Next item is matters arising out of caucus executive session, and I think we have at least one.
I'd like to.
I'm sorry, we have two. Do I go first?
I'll go first. First, I've actually got four.
Yours is very long.
I've got four separate ones.
You have four separate ones.
I'd like to make a motion authorizing the county administrator to continue to negotiate, but to also initiate legal action to establish public ownership of real property with tax Thank you for putting up that. I'll do that again here soon, but collectively commonly known as Melrose Landing.
Next time you can say lots of zeros. Okay.
I missed that, Mark. Would you repeat it?
Yeah.
I knew that would come from you, Brian.
We have a motion on the floor. We need a second, please. Somebody, anywhere, anybody.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Without objection, we will approve the motion. Are there any objections? Yes, sir. Oh, Mr. Hervichon got there first. Speedy. I saw that.
Yes, I'm going to vote against this. I do not agree that we should be spending a lot of money on the Fusky Island, which is what this is going to cost us, in a condemnation effort when an RFP last year indicated that there are other venues that we can use on the Fusky to provide ferry service. I don't think this is a good use of taxpayer dollars, nor an efficient use of taxpayer dollars, so for that reason, I'm going to be against this.
Thank you, Mr. Hervichon. Mr. Glover, you had your hand up.
I'm just going to object to the motion that's on the floor. Personally, I believe in, I don't have a problem with condemnation, but I believe in condemnation as the last resort, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? This is just another example of where all 11 people don't agree. So without, unless somebody wants a roll call, I'll pass it with a nine to two. Does anybody want a roll call? Okay, then this.
Is this the vote, or just to put it on to the agenda?
This is.
What's that?
I will be against it as well.
You're in opposition, so it's eight to three? Okay. It's eight to three. It passes eight to three, but does anybody want a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, let's do a roll call. Start with the folks online. Mr. Passamit.
Mr. Somerville. Sarah can actually do that for you. She can do the roll call.
Oh, Sarah can do it.
She has.
Yep, let her go.
I just learned how to use a cell phone. This is amazing.
Councilmember Cunningham.
No.
Councilmember Dawson. Councilmember Fluehling.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson.
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember McKellen. Councilmember Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hervichon.
No.
Councilmember Glover.
No.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Chairman Passamit.
Yes.
Seven, three.
Seven, three. Okay. First motion from.
So I'd like to make a second motion.
Make a second motion.
Second motion now that that has passed for the exact same two parcels.
Hold on a second.
Eight, three.
Eight, three, yeah, all right. Go ahead. We just want to make sure the math worked.
So I'd like to make a motion for the exact same two parcels as mentioned in the previous motion. Motion for the first reading by title only of an ordinance to appropriate funds in order to establish public ownership of real property, again, those same two parcels that we just mentioned, collectively commonly known as Melrose Landing.
Have a motion on the floor. Requires a second.
Second.
Comment? I'll just make a quick comment, and that is that this council has struggled with the DeFusky Island ferry issue for over a decade, in my memory. It's been difficult. There have never been any easy answers, and this is not an easy answer, but it's, in my view, it's the best option that we have. And I think it will not only benefit the residents, but I think it will help the island to develop, which it certainly wants to do, and which will eventually generate tax revenue, which will reimburse us for some of the money we're going to put out for this. So, any other comments?
Yes, if I could have the motion reread, please.
One with all the zeros, or this one?
No, he can summarize it for me.
This is motion for first reading by title only of an ordinance to appropriate funds in order to establish public ownership of real property, again, with those same two parcels we had previously talked about, collectively commonly known as Melrose Landing.
My, thank you, Mark, for that. Mr. Chairman, my comment, and I intend to vote against this, because it's unspecified how much money, how much public money, the source of funds, and the benefit to the county. We haven't really figured it out. The last motion was to negotiate and to start the process of condemnation, if necessary. But this is, this is like the next stage after negotiation fails and condemnation is necessary. I'm going to vote against this, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Maybe some clarification from legal. My understanding was that we have reached out, and there's no interest on the other parties to negotiate on the Melrose Landing.
That's correct. I mean, the details that you are seeking, or that Councilmember Fluehling is seeking would be in the ordinance whenever we bring that forward with regards to the amount. We don't have an exact amount yet, because we have to go through the process for establishing that. The funding source is a general fund, fund balance. We have enough cash on hand in order to do this. I think it's a great proposal. Moving forward, the staff has worked a long time to put this plan together, and I think it's, I think they've done a great job with it.
I appreciate that, Eric. And I agree that they're doing a great job on this matter, and also agree that it's something that will need to be done. But in the last motion, I understood them to say that negotiations would continue until some point undefined, and I get that. I get if it's now ready to go to condemnation and to proceed there, that we might not know the details. But, you know, I think that when we sit down to negotiate a price with somebody, we need to, we need to look at all the options. I think that there, we haven't explored grant opportunities or any other kind of help that we might be able to get, ARPA funds or anything like that. And I think that needs to be explored before we proceed with condemnation. And so I'm going to vote against this if condemnation is today, if you're starting to draw up the papers tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Fluehling. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My understanding is the number that we're talking about is roughly 800,000 to 1,505,000. And my sense of the first motion to allow for consideration of negotiations is essentially that even though the other party has said they don't want to negotiate, that if we're proceeding with the condemnation, that may open up the possibility of negotiations. And so therefore, we need to provide both of these options for the administrator.
I agree with that, Stu. And the motion of county council that Mark made just a moment ago that was approved overwhelmingly is that evidence that we're ready to proceed.
I would, I think you, if somebody says they won't negotiate, I think the only way you're going to get them to the table is if you start the condemnation process.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? We'll do a roll call on this. I'm sorry, you'll do a roll call on this.
Councilmember Cunningham.
No.
Councilmember Fluehling.
No.
Councilmember Dawson.
Yes.
Councilmember McKellen. Councilmember Lawson.
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hervichon.
No.
Councilmember Glover.
No.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Chairman Passamit.
Yes.
Eight, three. The motion passes.
I'm sorry, did I hear point of order?
Yes. Seven, four.
I didn't understand the point of order.
I'll yield to Joe. He's got one.
I have mine.
The roll call that I get is seven yes, four no, not eight, three.
Who was the other no? Sorry.
I was a no.
Brian was.
I didn't hear Mr. Glover.
Brian was the difference between the first and the second.
Apologize.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, I also have a point of order. Could you remind me who made that motion that just got passed? Seconded.
Stu seconded.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Lawson, you're still up.
All right, I'd like to make another motion coming out of our caucus executive session, and that would be a motion authorizing the county administrator to continue to negotiate, to initiate, and also to initiate legal action to establish public ownership of real property with tax map number R-552-0100000648000, and also a second parcel, R-552-0100000649000, located on Helmsman Way on Hilton Head Island.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion on the floor needing a second.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, over here, Eric, county administrator.
Oh, county administrator, okay.
The, I don't think we properly addressed the point of order. I think Councilmember Fluehling asked who made the previous motion. That was Councilmember Lawson, and I believe Councilmember Rodman seconded the motion. Just wanted the record to be clear. Now, I'll turn it back to you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Comments from members of council on the motion just presented by Councilman Lawson?
It hasn't been seconded.
He just seconded.
Oh, hey, I'll second. Thank you. Now we can ask for comments on the motion made by Councilman Lawson. There are none? Yes, sir.
I'll make it quick. This is just the other side of the same project we were discussing, just on the Hilton Head side instead of the DeFusky side. My belief is we still haven't researched all possibilities from Pinckney Island, which is my ultimate desire, and that is something we've disagreed a lot with on county council. But I know we say there's hurdles, but there's also hurdles for this, and I feel like we're pretty quick to take these hurdles on, but we haven't explored all the options for other locations on the island, so I will be objecting it.
All right, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. As Councilman Cunningham said, much like the other half of this project, we thought that was going to be expensive. This one's going to be a multiple of that, so this is going to be wildly expensive. In my view, it's a suboptimal location. The ferry, in my opinion, really should go on Pinckney Island. That's the only thing that can go on Pinckney Island. It puts it much further west, much further, much closer to the mainland, so when we talk about attracting visitors, tourists, workers over to DeFusky Island, certainly further west, further north, makes a lot of sense to me. And again, it's just, it's incredibly expensive. We talked about Pinckney Island a year or two ago at this point, and the numbers that we were throwing around then were much less than the numbers that we're throwing around now. And at that point, it was basically tabled as being too expensive there, so I take issue with that. I take issue with the expense of the whole project and just the suboptimal location of it.
Thank you, Mr. Hervichon. Did I see another hand? Yes, sir. I think, oh, sorry.
I stand like I stand before.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, let me speak to the little broader view of where I think we are with DeFusky. It's probably the second largest undeveloped island, maybe the largest underdeveloped island on, in the east coast. What's happening in the real estate market, we're seeing a lot of interest in terms of development of DeFusky. We do have an obligation to provide service to the property owners that are there, not necessarily for the day visitors. It's extremely expensive, what it's costing us now, I think between the school district and the county, we're in the 400,000 to 500,000 range a year for the ferry service for a very limited number of people, and we have to vacate the current site. We're also in discussions with the group in Savannah about having a ferry service from Savannah to DeFusky to Hilton Head, which would be a great advantage to us if that happens. And the two sites that we're talking about, well, the site on DeFusky would be a very prime site to do one of the two landings. Now, if you look at why DeFusky has not developed over time, it's basically because nobody ever really solved the marine transportation to an island. And the problem always comes back to not a ferry system, but parking. So what we're talking about here on the mainland is solving that particular problem. The staff came forward with multiple suggestions as alternatives. This particular one emerged as the best one. I would take exception to the Pinckney Island one, because it's a national preserve, and it's very limited in what you can do, and the real problem there is there's not enough space for overnight parking, so it doesn't do any good for the residents and everybody else if they can't park overnight. So, if you think about the landings, Melrose itself works well if we do something with Savannah, and it works well for day folks, and it also works well for the residents, it's all coming out of wherever they do, which would be Broad Creek in this case. I think the Broad Creek one that we're talking about would primarily be residents, other property owners that are renting to second, to short-term rentals, and to workers that have to get back and forth. I think the, any of the day tourists will probably originate out of Harbor Town going to DeFusky and Savannah, because it's a much shorter run and it's a better embarkation place. So we may not actually need to buy all of the property we're talking about here. It is expensive. It's approaching $4 million. Now, if we control the landings, if we provide the landings, then we're in a position to go out and bid ferry service that we've never been really able to do in the past, and I think a competitive bidding process will go a long way to reduce the costs that we're paying today. In terms of payback, there's two things. In terms of payback, there's two things. One is we reduce the money we're spending now, the half million or whatever it is that we're, we're talking about. And if the island develops, we then end up with tax revenues. And I think the combination of those two will provide a relatively quick payback on the debt service that would be required to, to do these. The other one we've talked a little bit about is whether or not it makes sense to do a TIF, which is, without going into a lot of detail, it's, it's a way to essentially borrow money by fixing the current tax rate and then using the growth that takes place to fund bonds that then could be used to develop the infrastructure. And I, and I think in the long term, that's going to be something that, that we want to take, take a look at. So a little bit wordy on that, but, but I do believe there's a much bigger picture here than just buying a piece of property and putting a landing in. I think this is integral to the development of DeFuski, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And just on a personal, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, let me, and let me just add to that. Obviously, DeFuski is a place that I've represented and love the people over there and what they do. And we've also promised the Buckingham Landing people that we would move from that location as soon as we possibly can. So again, that is something else that we, as we move forward, our staff has worked very hard to locate destination spots that we can own both sides, own the DeFuski side, own the mainland side. If we control those two points, then we control our future, we control the ferry in the future. And, and as Stu alluded to, hopefully at that point, if we control both landings, we'll have private enterprises that step in, pick up, and are able then to provide ferry service, and also that, as we mentioned, parking on, on, on both sides. So this is something that if we do not do this, the cost of the ferry will continue to go up, it'll be limited service, and that's something else, DeFuski pays taxes like everybody else. We do the ferry service, it is going to maintain their values, maintain what they pay in taxes, which again is going to pay us back in, in, in numerous folds to, to help pay for this in, in the long run. So this is something that's not, we're just not doing for this year right now. This is something that we're looking forward to for, for years to come. And again, if we own both landings, it will be in perpetuity that we'll have established a, a, a place either end. And as we've all seen, prices only keep going up. So if we don't do it now, it's going to cost us more next year or more the following year if, if we don't step up and do something now.
Yes, sir. Logan?
Thanks, Chairman. I don't think the discussion really comes down to, do we want to own mainland and a spot on DeFuski? That's not the disagreement we have. I mean, that, that makes perfect sense. The question is, where is that location and how do we go about doing it? Where does that line get drawn of the way to go about it? And this, this project easily will go north of 10 million when it's done. That's, that's my personal opinion, and we're looking at, I think it said, close to 1.4 for one and over four for the other one, and that's just purchasing property, not infrastructure. So I, I don't think that's out of the question, just to put those numbers in perspective. And Mr. Rodman said a minute ago, we have like that obligation to, to the residents of DeFuski. That's fair, and that's a valid argument. They are taxpaying citizens of Beaufort County. But we don't owe it to developers or to residents that don't currently live there. The residents on Beaufort County, what, on, on the mainland, what benefit do they have of this in that location? I mean, the things that I've discussed on Pinckney Island is a discovery center that our schools can go use to, that our visitors can go to, operated by Beaufort County like we have in other places. This, to me, is just transportation, and it doesn't get any bigger than that. But we do have other opportunities, I think, that we can explore. It's just my personal opinion. But just to get some of those numbers out there, too, that's where we are sitting, is it's going to be north of 10 million right now.
Thank you. Just a personal note, I grew up, my grandparents and my parents talked about the Savannah boat, that's what they called it, the Savannah boat, when there was a ferry service. And my uncle, Harry Burr, was the chief engineer on the Cliveden, which was the last ferry boat that went between Savannah and Hilton Head, Beaufort and DeFuski. And so I think, and I remember my mother saying that you can only buy meat on Tuesday because that's when the Savannah boat came in. So anyway, I, I think would be great for expansion of tourism, as well as a development of the island, I'm certainly going to support it. Anybody else? Would I do a roll call?
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Fluehler?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hervishon?
No.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Vice Chair Somerville?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
Seven, four, it passes.
Thank you. And you're not done yet.
I am not done yet. One final one. A motion for the first reading by title only of an ordinance to appropriate funds in order to establish public ownership of the real property, same tax map numbers from the previous motion, located on Helmsman Way, Hilton Head Island.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second the motion.
We're in discussion. Looking at the remote folks, I don't see any hands about those of us who are here. Okay? Gerald, was that a hand up or was that a gesture glasses? Okay. Jackie. All right, we'll call a question and do a roll call.
Don't want to make it too easy on your side.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Fluehler?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hervishon?
No.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Vice Chair Somerville?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
The motion passes, seven, four.
And that's it? Are you out of motions?
I'm done. I'm out of motion.
I don't think anybody can top that one.
Time for me to go home.
I don't think there are any other motions coming out of executive session, so we'll move on to item number nine, which is the approval of the consent agenda. And there are four items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, Mr. Chair, second.
Okay. Without objection, we will approve the consent agenda. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. And that brings us to item number 10, which is the third reading of an ordinance to make appropriations for county government special purpose districts for Beaufort County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2023. This is our county budget. Do I have a motion for the county budget for 2022?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a first, we have a motion, and a second on the floor. Do we have any discussion? We talked about this, I don't want to say ad nauseam, ad tedium, we just talked about it a lot, right?
Yeah, we did.
Do you want to comment, Stu? Is that, oh, I'm sorry, you're, you're, no, you're.
After you, after you.
You have to handle it.
I got to find mine, Stu. Go ahead.
At second reading, we had a discussion about a certain dollar sum, I forgot what it was, relative to the Solicitor's Office where we provide funds to help prosecute DUI cases. And DUI cases, the, the first time, they go to the magistrate's court, and beyond that, they go through the regular court system, if there's a second one. And I think we said we would come back and revisit that as to whether we wanted to have it or not have it. I had a brief conversation with the solicitor about it, and the, the background kind of goes like this. The, the reason for it is that if there's not an attorney with the, with the arresting officer, sometimes you get into complex statutes, and so a lawyer can outmatch a sheriff's deputy who doesn't have experience in that level. And cer, and, and when you have certainty of an outcome, that tends to drive pleas sometimes. Now, so I said, well, what's the conviction rate? And he said, prior to us doing this, conviction rate was about one in three, and today the conviction rate is two in three. So the conviction rate has basically doubled. So I said, well, how, how do you run the, the attorneys? And he said, relative to schedule, the, the dockets controlled by the magistrate, so Solicitor's Office doesn't control when those particular items come through. And the way they manage it, which seems to be what they do in other places in the country, is instead of having dedicated attorneys that prosecute just these cases, they use it as fill-in. So if you have X number of attorneys, they may be spending 5%, 10%, 15% of their time going to magistrate's court to handle these particular items. Now, Solicitor said, you know, he was kind of happy if some, if they, if we wanted him to do it. He was, they were kind of happy if we wanted to have somebody else, like have an attorney at the, the sheriff's to do it. So he was, he was indifferent on that. I, I do tend to think if I was an attorney, I would rather be doing this on a, occasionally as opposed to being full-time going to magistrate's court to deal with DUIs. But in any event, we're the ones that asked them to do this. So the real question is, should we continue it? And I think we just heard from the young, the young lady that was here that was hurt in a DUI. So it does seem to me want to, we want to continue it, and as if the solicitor doesn't care, it seems to me we ought to take the money and either give it to the sheriff and let him do it if he wants to, or let the solicitor do it. But in either way, I think we'd be shortsighted if we discontinued the program.
Are you making a motion?
Well, we have a discussion where we wanted to go, I guess. And I, I guess the question is, anybody disagree that we shouldn't do it? And then beyond that, I don't really care whether Solicitor does it or the sheriff does it.
May I have some comments?
Sure.
The DUI backlog is around 330 cases, the oldest one's going back to 2019, which is unacceptable. We funded a pilot program with the Solicitor's Office that resulted in these 330 cases of people charged with DUI who have never been adjudicated. The Sheriff's Department has indicated that he would like to take on these cases, and he has hired a staff attorney to assist the deputies in magistrate's court to prosecute these cases. The person he has hired used to work at the Solicitor's Office, and he now has the opportunity with the support of his superiors to prosecute these cases in magistrate's court full-time. They wish to hire other people to assist him in that cause, which hopefully will reduce the number of backlogs, and people who are charged with DUI will be brought into court to face those charges. We have already reduced, as I understand, the budget by the amount of $187,000, and that's what we'll be voting on tonight. And I think that we can redirect those funds if we, if we come to the conclusion that the pilot program has been a failure, and perhaps it's time to reconsider how we address this issue with an enthusiastic supporter of prosecutions assisted by an attorney where they are conducted in the other 41 counties within the state of South Carolina, or just wait for the backlog to continue to build up. So my vote would be to approve the budget with the reduction and redirect those funds to someone who will prosecute these cases in a timely fashion.
And that can be done after we approve the budget?
Yes, it can be. You can come back for a supplemental appropriation, and we can decide how much money they will need to hire one or two more attorneys to, to assist the one who has already been hired by the sheriff to do just this thing.
Larry, you're saying that the sheriff already has this in his budget because he's given us his budget, so that means that he's already hired somebody?
He has that, he has that in his budget.
Okay.
That's right. Any money we direct in a supplemental appropriation would be for further help with the program in both the magistrate's court here in Beaufort and the magistrate's court in Bluffton.
So if the sheriff needs additional funds, he'll ask for it?
That's right.
Okay.
I guess, is there any reason why we wouldn't redirect that money to the sheriff now if that's the logical outcome?
Because we, because his, his budget has already been established, and for him to get the additional money that is now available, I believe he would have to come back with a supplemental appropriation. Is that correct?
Okay. Anybody else?
So is, is there any dis, I take it, I agree 100% with this, TJ ought to do it, so I have no problem with that.
York?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things from the administration. On the public defender's office, I know we, in mid-year appropriated funds, and I see only the ending for this year, so is the appropriation that we did early on this year included in the 15, 1.5 million that's in the budget at this time? I just want to make sure the public defender's office is fully funded for all the things that they wanted to do, and you didn't give me a 2022 number, but you did give me a 2023 number. I just want to make sure that's in.
Yes, so Beaufort County did increase the public defender's contribution, it's coming from our county. As her office receives funding from a circuit of counties, there are five altogether, we did increase our funding. However, her fund, as it currently sits, the expenditures for fiscal '23 are not fully covered, but that is not because of Beaufort. That is because the other counties that are participants in that district and for whom she serves have not correspondingly increased their budgets for their personnel.
The, um, the increase that was given to employees for Beaufort County that she requested, they're covered.
Her employees that work for Beaufort County are more than covered by our contribution. Specifically, our employees account for 67% of her total personnel budget, yet Beaufort's contributions when compared to the other counties that participate in funding her program pays for 78%. So if you want to look at brass tax, we are contributing approximately 11% more than what is our fair share.
Because one of the things she talked about was an increase for her lawyers, attorneys, and she increased that so that she can be competitive. I just want to make sure that they are being fully covered at this time, that's all.
Her personnel costs are fully covered.
I don't want to get into our effort versus somebody else's effort, other counties, I just want to make sure that the increase that she made, she requested is all taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, in the budget itself, there's a lot of increase for PALS. Can you speak on that? And the reason I'm asking you to speak on it, because I want to know exactly what the increase is, a lot in capital projects, a lot in salary. Is this an anticipation or is this current employees or the anticipation that when the study comes back, we're going to need more?
We, so a couple of things are going on with regards to that. Most of the increase that you see for PALS in the current budget is because we've had to hire additional staff in response to us being successful in our bid with the Low Country Council of Governments to take over the senior programming.
That's in here then, PALS?
Yes, sir, that's correct. That's, that's in the PALS budget. In addition to that, as you are more than aware, many of you get constantly battered, as do I, about the condition of parks and rec facilities. We have programmed some money for continued improvements into the PALS budget to help with some of those improvements that are necessary, that when the study comes back, I think we're going to be fine for the budget year based on the study with regards to improvements because we will have to program those things as a part of next year's budget in order to put in the funding necessary to implement that plan. That plan will not be to us until sometime in, in December, as I understand it. And so we will, we will either decide if there's something that's a burning issue that we need to fund. need to fund after January 1, or if it can wait until the next budget cycle be approved in FY '24.
One of the things that you mentioned early on about the seniors program, that it would probably be budgeted for about half a million dollars. And I see where funds coming in is about 200 and less than 300,000. I'm assuming that's coming from the state?
Well, thank you for the question. We didn't apply. We submitted an application for an RFP. The total amount that it's going to cost the county to run the program is right around There was a maximum that ElCog could increase the funding because of how state law is written, and the total amount that we're going to get is about $525,000. So, there is a delta. Part of that delta was, one of the items on your agenda is adding a sixth location at the Liboré Brown Center, which is about 18,000 plus additional staff. So, when you add all that, that's about $75,000 of that delta. Does that help?
No, no, sure. I saw 288 something, but you said it's 525.
Correct. Right, and that's because it's split up in different locations, right? You have staffing. We have a number of the folks who are going to work in that are considered temporary employees, i.e., bus drivers are temporary, part-time. So, those numbers would come out of the temporary line item, not the staff. So, when you're, the full-time staff receive benefits. So, when you're looking through it, it's not all in one location in the budget.
So, a lot of the PALS increases really toward the seniors and not necessarily for the PALS program overall. But that'll come with the study as we move forward. The study will probably dictate that we may need to be doing a little bit more.
So, there were a number of allocations. I'll give you the big ones.
Yes, sir.
All right. Million dollar per pool, that's for three locations. $500,000 per pool to update the mechanical stuff that's broken. We all know the condition of the pools. That takes care of those three. Some of that, I think, was paid out of the, not the fund balance, but the surplus. There's the word. In addition, there is $700,000 for repairing broken items, as in playgrounds, things of that nature. There's additional money for drainage and other repairs on fields, things of that nature. And I don't have the spreadsheets in front of me, so I'm just going through them. And the other big-ticket item was, we had a couple of vehicles, and then some additional staff or programming. So, there's a lot in that budget. It's a really big budget, but each of those has a place. Will there be additional needs after we do this? Yes, there absolutely will be.
So, this is more or less a catch-up budget?
It is absolutely a catch-up budget, with the exception of the seniors, which is an additional growth dollar amount. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. One last question, Mr. Chairman. It deals with the funding for Rural and Critical, and the money that's in Rural and Critical, and they have it for different sites. Is that money coming out of our budget, or is it coming out of Rural and Critical funding?
You're talking about to develop parks?
Yeah.
Yeah. To develop parks comes out of the Rural and Critical Langens money. I think 5 million was awarded to the Passive Parks Program for the development of passive parks. We do have, we now have reached a point, and there is a new personnel item in the regular budget to hire a park ranger, for us to be able to send someone around to check on the parks, to make sure trash is picked up, things are in proper working order, there's no safety issues, and things like that, in addition to some associated equipment in order to make that position function effectively.
And that will come out of the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Blower, we're at, do you want to say?
Yep, there was one thing that I left out that I want to make sure that you are all aware of, and that is maintenance equipment, lawn mowers, blowers, some very large field mowing equipment, rakes, and a couple of vehicles. That's a little over $350,000 worth of equipment that we purchased. And we're replacing stuff that's 30 years old, so none of it's extravagant spending, I assure you.
A maintenance budget, which basically means that we should have been funding it years ago, but we finally get to a point that...
Okay, absolutely. Okay.
This is a third and final reading of the county budget. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council? During that, Gerald, are you adjusting your glasses again? Okay. Well, I mean, it looks like you're, okay, all right. If not, I'll call the question. All in favor of the 2022-2023 school, Beaufort County budget indicate by raising your hand?
Beaufort County, yes.
Uh-oh.
Beaufort County, not school, right?
Right. Beaufort County.
Thank you. That looks unanimous. All right, now, that brings us to one of the reasons several people are with us tonight. That is, "several" is probably an understatement. The third and third reading and final reading of an ordinance to provide for the levy of tax for school purposes for Beaufort County for the fiscal year July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023, and to make appropriations for said purposes. Do they have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to pass the...
Thank you. Have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
I do have one. You know, I've been concerned and spoken to the fact about whether we're really taking care of the teachers in this. And if memory serves me correctly, a number of years back, we were at a point where the district was concerned about the teacher salaries, and we at council actually said, "Look, we would welcome a tax increase to fix that." I think that led to the supplemental. Back several months ago, when I was meeting with the district, I asked what we needed as the number to be competitive. And the number that was put on the table was 50. When we got to first reading, and we were talking about it, there were several council members that I interpreted said, hey, you know, we would like to see us getting to being more competitive on teachers. And so, I said that, although I couldn't speak for council, my sense was there were several council members that were sensitive to that particular issue, and suggested that the district come back and tell us what would be the increased taxes that we would have to pay, consider, if we were going to become more competitive. Well, we got to second reading, and that was not forthcoming. And so, I raised the issue again and said, you know, my sense was, and I couldn't speak for council, but that there were members that were sensitive to that and might be willing to consider a tax increase. And some of the discussion along the way was, you know, we got all these numbers of vacancies, and we got teachers that, when they decide to come here, they find out they can't afford to live here, and we're comparing our salaries to other places around the state, but not really taking into account cost of living. And there was an email that came across today that said Hilton Head and Beaufort and Bluffton are the two most expensive places in the state to live from a cost of living standpoint. So, I think we ought to, you know, pass this, but I'm still very receptive, and I hope council would be, that if you all came back as a supplemental and said, "Look, we'd really like to fix the problem, and here's what we think it would cost," I think you'd find that this council would be sensitive to that. So, I just raised that issue, not that I disagree with the budget, and I think you're all are doing a fine job, but I do think we're struggling with being competitive, giving the cost of living with where we are here. And I think we, as a community, want this to have the best teachers we can have.
Yes, sir. So, first of all, thank you all for having us here this evening. Thank you for supporting our budget, certainly during the first two readings that we've had. And I am here tonight, again, to ask you for your support on this third reading, to help us carry it across the finish line. As you know, employee compensation has been at the very heart and the priority of this budget. We have vetted different possibilities, and in being fiscally responsible, we've considered the potential for uncertain times, economic times ahead that may lie ahead, and believe that this budget positions us to best deal with the possible economic uncertainty that could exist. We want to make sure that what we do and the significant progress that we have made in terms of compensation in this budget, that is sustainable, right? That it is sustainable. And so, I want to thank you for the spirit with which you speak and with the intentions with which you've spoken about that number and around employee compensation. And we will definitely be counting on that support as we systematically continue to move our compensation as the uncertainty around economic times ahead lifts. I'd like to ask Ms. Crosby to step up and talk a little bit about, a little more specific in detail for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Rodman, other council members. I did make some points this evening, specific to your comments in previous meetings. So, very early on in the budget process, we did follow, the district staff really followed the state's lead in terms of compensation. The governor indicated initially that he wanted a $4,000 increase in the budget, and the House went along with that. So, we originally built our budget on that $4,000 increase. And then, the board took some other measures to add another $2,500 in. So, we, in essence, rose teacher salaries 12% if you look at the take-home pay, but 20% in terms of the actual starting teacher salary. So, that is one of the most significant increases that I have seen in the state, the most significant increase that I've seen in the state. And in terms of the comparison with other school districts, Greenville was number one, and they just passed their budget with a starting teacher salary of $44,500. This budget provides a $45,566 starting teacher pay, which is $1,000 more than Greenville. So, they were number one, and we're going to be $1,000 more. So, unless another district did something really substantial, I believe it's going to place us at the top of the scale. In addition to that $45,000, this district still has in place a $2,500 locality supplement for teachers. And in addition to that, the board passed a $2,000 retention bonus. So, technically, this school year, our teachers, starting teachers, will receive $50,66 in compensation. Now, we may have met the goal temporarily, but we're not done yet. Our work isn't done. So, we intend to continue to increase our efforts by raising the base teacher salaries in future years, but we have to make sure that we can sustain those costs, particularly in the face of potential economic downturns. And we all know with inflation right now, it is only a matter of time before we see some downturn in housing costs and so on. The current compensation increases amount to $19 million, and the state's giving us $2.5 million increases in state revenue. Beaufort's being funded at a fraction of the cost to sustain those increases, the mandated increases that they're providing, and it amounts to about 13% of those increases. The cost of moving an additional, the remaining locality supplement and an additional $2,000 to meet the base salary of $50,000 will cost the district $6.5 million, of which we will get no additional funding from the state. So, this is, but the risk of being able to sustain that, I think, is much greater. We can't quantify it, but we will, it would exhaust all of the millage that is allowable to the district, the 8.7 mills. So, it would double, more than double, the tax increase that we've requested or proposed of four mills. And it would, we took a conservative approach by going with four mills and increasing further at this time when the economy is really tough on folks with fuel and rising food costs. We don't, we aren't recommending that at this time. So, our recommendation is to move forward with the current budget as is, but allow us time to continue to assess the revenues, both local and state, to see what that does, and then with the possibility of discussing that, you know, again, throughout the year. Teacher salaries and other compensations increases will continue to be at the forefront, not only in our district, but across the country. And so, but at this time, we were requesting the same, for the approval of the budget that we provided. But one last note, just as something that occurred to me over the last few days. With this budget, we were talking about a press release, and we were putting out there what we were doing. I've not seen an increase of this size. What this is going to do is draw a lot of attention at the state level to really continuing to push forward, and every one of us, every school district, moving forward ahead of the other. And it's going to draw a lot of attention at the state level, and hopefully allow our state legislation to pursue, continue to increase levels that we've seen this year. And so, we can only, that will only be a win for all of us. So, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions or comments you have.
Let me make, I do want to make a comment. I made a terrible error when Superintendent Rodriguez got up. I didn't introduce him by name, so I apologize for that. And Tanya Crosby is Chief Financial Officer. I apologize for that. So, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, and obviously, I support the budget, what you've got. You guys do a great job, and I know you've mentioned that all the money that the increase now is going to cover pay increases for teachers. So, the big question, though, and again, I'm going to put you on the spot, but also give you a platform, is we've seen so much with the school shooting in Texas. Obviously, is there more money needed for school security? What are we doing to secure the schools? And you've got the floor to go ahead and let us know and tell people so they feel comfortable with what you've got.
Thank you. First of all, it's obviously an incredibly important topic that is always on the forefront of what we do. We have great collaboration with our law enforcement partners throughout Beaufort County, in the municipalities, and in the sheriff's office. And we continue to work closely together. In fact, tomorrow, we have active shooter training taking place. So, this is something that we do on an ongoing basis. In terms of the training regarding this, we actually go above and beyond what the state mandated training is, and so, we push that envelope even further. The governor's office or the legislature, I'm not sure which, but it's coming from there, right, from our elected officials, have been providing costs for two additional SROs per year. And so, we currently have SROs in our middle schools and in our high schools, and we have in some elementary schools already. We are, we will continue to add, as they continue to provide the funding for those two additional SROs, we will continue to add SROs as long as they are available from our law enforcement partners. But in addition to that, at our elementary schools, we have armed security guards that our school district has funded, that our board funded, saw it as a priority and funded. And so, every one of our elementary schools that does not have an SRO has an armed security guard on site that receives additional training as well. In addition to that, we also, through the 2019 referendum, have safety and security measures that are a part of that referendum that we continue to put into our schools. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about that.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. I know you guys, some of them are already answered, Mr. Rob and I. You know, the drive for 50 is basically what we're saying. And I didn't know about their attention, that's 2,000. So, that puts people that are coming back in this year over 50, which would actually put them to 51, 470 and change, because they're technically a second-year teacher, right?
They would get a step increase as well, yes.
Yeah, so with their step increase on top of that. My only question for... My, my only question for you all is, did we ever bring it to the school board in an open session to see what they thought of it, to allow them with a chance to vote on it? Because the school board asked to pass your budget first, correct? Before you bring it to us? Did it ever get brought back to the school board in your meeting? I think it was last week or the week before.
No, we did not take back the, we moved forward with the budget as proposed. If we had done that, we would have basically restarted the budget process, because it would be a substantive change between second and third reading and would have required the board to vote again and then go through three more readings with council, which would probably put us in the mid-August approving this budget. So we've requested, we, district staff chose to move forward, request, with this request as, as approved by the board.
Did they have any open discussions about it? Whether it was brought like back to the agenda item, just to give them the information, hey, this is what came to us from council? These are the numbers. We came up with the percentage. I know you guys are banking the mills right now for the future to use for another project, but was it ever brought for them to have the opportunity to voice their opinions, see who supported it, who didn't support it?
It was not on an agenda.
Can I say, Chair, if you have a comment as a school board member?
Sir? Thank you. I'm Tricia Fedrich, District Four. I just wanted to address that. You know, we have the opportunity to ask for anything on an agenda, just like you all do. What I think was unclear to you all is that we knew that we were the first of 50. We already knew that. We knew with the supplemental income, the 2,500, with the $2,000 retention, we knew that we were going to provide to our first-year teachers over $50,000, $50,066. So I personally did not need to discuss that anymore, because I knew we were already there. I don't, I understand that maybe you all did not realize that, because the actual starting salary, the recurring costs are not at 50, all right? But we knew we were already the first of 50. So we did not discuss it in an open session, but a number of the board members, right? We all knew that already, so I didn't feel the need to bring it to an agenda. And I'll only speak for myself. I apologize, I have a cold. You know, I sound like I'm very congested. Does that help, Mr. Cunningham?
A little bit, yeah. I mean, most definitely. But just, just to be clear, it would only be your second-year teachers that are over 50?
No, sir. It's $50,066 for a first-year starting teacher.
So, so the clarification also to that, the first-year teachers are also benefiting from the 2,500 locality supplement as well.
Correct.
It is a recruiting and retention.
Okay, so it's recruiting and retention, not just retention for your second-year teachers?
Those who are higher and those who return will receive it.
Okay, yes, definitely makes a difference. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from members of council regarding the school's 2022, 2023 budget? Hearing none, I'm going to take a flyer on this and say we're going to approve this without objection. Are there any objections?
Has there been a motion and a second to approve the budget?
I mean, a motion.
A motion is a good one, yeah.
Yeah, we did, we did. What's that?
Just checking.
Oh, no, no, I appreciate that. That's good. I want somebody to have my back. Without objection, we're going to approve the 2022, 2023 school budget. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your support. This is really a monumental increase, and we are excited about it and want to thank you for your support.
Thank you all. We can't thank you enough.
Everybody's leaving?
Yeah.
We have some fascinating topics coming up. I can't believe.
We'll have to put them last next time.
All right. Now, next item.
Let them get out of here.
Okay. All right, we would normally be on item number 12.
Yeah.
However, I think we have an off-agenda item, which we will insert between 11 and 12 and renumber after that, and I believe Mr. McKellen is going to tell us about that.
I just want to clarify that the, the, it was a little earlier, some confusion. A number of people were contributing. I just want to clarify that motion, which is now number 12, and all of the other numbers have changed in a succeeding fashion. So number 12 is now a motion to introduce an ordinance by title only to levy and impose a sales and use tax subject to referendum within Beaufort County in support of the County Greenspace Sales Tax Act recently enacted by the South Carolina General Assembly. And I think that should, that should clarify it pretty well, right, Tom?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Need a second? I'll second. Now we're in discussion, and one of the folks who's going to speak to us is Senator Davis. Let me give you the microphone, and then we'll debate it amongst ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I begin, I neglected to, when I thanked Mr. Hervichan and Mr. Robbin and you, Mr. Chairman, for your service. I didn't see Mr. Flowelling at the dais, and, and I neglected to realize that he was participating virtually. He certainly, he's served since 2009, excellent years of service. He's going to be well missed, and I'm confident that there's, there's things in store in the future for him as well. So I did want to mention that. The second thing I'd like to mention before I get into this particular greenspace proposal is to compliment county council and the committee it appointed, I think was headed by Dean Moss, to identify the, the, the road priority projects in Beaufort County. I, I think they did a good job of, of looking at where the needs were. I think they were equitable in terms of allocating and trying to look at the various regions of the county so that there was, you know, everybody had skin in the game. And I think that's excellent work product, and, and I would submit to you that, that even if, if you don't move forward on a penny sales tax for those transportation projects this year, I don't think that that's work that's wasted. And the reason I say that is there is an inordinate amount of federal and state money that's, that's flooding the system right now. You've got the, the $6 billion that will be appropriating over a five, or authorizing the expenditure over a five-year period that's coming down from the federal government. You've got $120 million in recurring funds above and beyond the gas tax that we're appropriating the DOT to further draw down that, that federal match. That's another $600 million. We've got more money that we're dedicating to the CTC. We've got $1 billion that we're simply not spending this year. We're putting into a contingency reserve fund that we can spend for whatever purpose we want in out-years. And I can tell you that, that road funding is going to be one of those priority items. And so I think there's an excellent opportunity with, with all of the money that's, that's sort of swimming around the system right now, looking for a home, so to speak. It would be a good idea, I would suggest, for this county council to make a formal recommendation of what the road priorities are, and then charge our delegation with assisting you and working with the DOT and working with the CIV and working with, with the other funding agencies at both the federal and state level to try to get as many of those, of those projects funded. And what that would then do is that when you came into the next year of 2024, you would have a better idea of which of those projects were able to be funded with those existing federal and state dollars, and you would narrow your list down to those that truly needed the local dollars in order to get done. So, so I, I wanted to start by saying that, because I talked with Dean Moss on the phone, and I recognize all the work that they put in. And I just want to emphasize that, that I certainly don't consider that, that to be wasted work. And in fact, I think it's going to, to really help us in, in the, in the months to come when we try to get an equitable amount of that money down into Beaufort County. The other thing I would say is, the problem right now with, with roads and bridges, ironically enough, isn't a money problem, so to speak. You've, you've got so much demand filling the space now with the federal money and state money that supply, road contractors can't keep up with the work. For instance, by way of example, I-95 will be three-laned in each direction from the Georgia-Sacola line to Exit 8. That's fully funded, the environmentals about to be completed, if not completed, the rights-of-way acquisition are about to be completed, if not completed. And yet Christie Hall, a DOT, can't get people out there and actual, starting to do the work until another 18 months. And, and that's because there's just, there's just so much money chasing after too few contractors. So I just wanted to start off by making those particular comments to y'all. By contrast, and, and I think it's going to stand you in better stead in 2024 if and when you go to the voters for a penny sales tax or a pro-rata portion for road projects, to have done this additional degree of diligence, to demonstrate and, and tell the public that yes, we tried to get it funded and we're, we're unable. So, and anyway, wanted to start making those comments. In regard to the thing that's before us right now, this local option, sales tax penny for open space, this is something that I've been, been thinking about for, for quite some time, primarily because of the leadership that county council has shown in the Rural and Critical Lands program. And, and the, the success of that program has enjoyed the support of the public, it has enjoyed, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's been up for three or four times to authorize the borrowing of funds, and I believe it always gets approved in the mid-'70s. And, and so it's something intuitively people in Beaufort County understand, that there's something about Beaufort County's ecosystem, the water, the land, the marshes, that makes us unique. And, and in large measure is the reason why people are coming here in droves. I mean, they, they want to live here. I mean, it's a great place to live. I mean, South Carolina is one of the fastest-growing states in the nation, and Beaufort County is one of the fastest-growing counties in South Carolina. And, and I grew up in, in Maryland, and, and came down here when I was 18 and went to Firth. But I grew up in Maryland, and we used to fish on the Chesapeake Bay and go out there. And, and I saw firsthand how the development of the Mid-Atlantic watershed ruined the Chesapeake Bay for generations to come. And, and they're spending hundreds of billions of dollars now to try to claim it back, but they're never going to get a fraction of what it used to be. We still have here in Beaufort County with our estuarian system of the Port Royal Sound and St. Helena Sound, we still have something that is more or less pristine, something that, that, that can still be saved and preserved. But, and I'm not sharing any new news here, when I say that it's being jeopardized. You, you drive down 170, you, you go on 278, whether you're going, you know, toward Hiltonhead or whether you're going toward I-95, and you don't just see development, you see hundreds of acres of land being developed en masse with, with trees being cut down and with roads being put in and with houses going up and the co-committed, you know, environmental degradation that follows. And, and it's happening before our very eyes. And so I, I would argue that it's an exigent circumstance. It's an argument that I made to my colleagues in the Senate and the House. This passed almost unanimously in both the Senate and the House, even, even among those that consider themselves, like I do, as, as staunch fiscal conservatives. And I am. I've never voted for a tax increase in my life that I know of, and, and, and you all wouldn't be voting for one here either. What you would be doing is submitting it to the people of Beaufort County to let them decide whether or not this was something they wanted to bear in terms of cost. And, and I think that the reason that I think the people of Beaufort County support it, and the reason I support it, is these are spillover costs and externalities caused by development for which there is no ample mitig, no, no meaningful mitigation right now. There are no other source of funds we could go to, to, to halt the degradation other than this. Governor McMaster was, was eager to sign this when he got this, and enjoys wide support, you know, throughout the state, but I think its need is particularly acute here in Beaufort County because of our fragile ecosystem. And so what I would propose, or what I would suggest and urge you to consider, is a half-penny sales tax as opposed to a penny. I, I think that's, that's a nod in, in part to that it is a new program, and I think it's important to instill some public confidence, but also because the economy is, is obviously strained right now with the prices rising. Although I would note that the half-penny sales tax, if approved, would not apply to gasoline, would not apply to groceries. Those are exempt from the sales tax. But in any event, it is still a difficult time, and you're swimming upstream to get something like this passed. And so what I would suggest is, is for the same 10-year period that the, the Road Transportation Committee was considering, if you have a half penny during that 10 years, I think the economic projections were that it would yield $350 million over that period of time. What could then happen is that income stream could then be leveraged and bonded to have $350 million worth of bonds issued for purposes of procurement, preservation procurements and, and other preservation techniques, with that bond and indebtedness then being amortized over the 10-year period of time through the collection of those, of that half-penny sales tax revenue. The way the ordinance is, or the way the, the state statutory language reads is that this county council would be in charge of appointing the committee that would decide on how to utilize the funds, on, on what purchases to make, what, you know, whether it would be conservation easements, whether they be fee simple purchases, whether they be something else. And, and so I, I don't have anything to offer in that regard, but, but obviously that's, that's something that's within your discretion. I, I do think that, that we have the benefit here in Beaufort County of having seen the Rural and Critical Lands program work. We have an idea of where expertise lies. I think, I think county council has a pretty good idea of who's astute in regard to identifying lands that are particularly vulnerable. I think there are, there are others that are astute in regard to how do you go about getting the best bang for the buck? You don't necessarily need to purchase fee simple title all the time. You can simply, you know, buy conservation easements, you can buy, you can buy downzoning, you can, you can do any number of things. But I think it would be particularly proud, and I think that, that you should and Beaufort County should be particularly proud, if we were the first ones to take advantage of this, and we were the ones to show the rest of the state, this is how you go about taking care of things in your own backyard. This is how you go about making the case to the people and, and getting it passed. I'm ready to get to work. I mean, I, I'm, I'm ready to spend the summer and the fall in, in, in working to talk to my constituents about this, and, and I hope that you give it favorable consideration. I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Thank you very much. So we're now in discussion with the senator. Any comments or questions from members of council?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I've always gotten questions. Senator Davis.
Yes, sir, Mr. Glover.
I, I, I've been, I've been a proponent for the Rural and Critical Land for, for years. Supported it, served on that board for some time, and support the program, believing in the program. One, one of the things that, in the Rural and Critical Land program, we deal with landowners, and it's a voluntary kind of thing. And we basically have done considerable amount of green space, development rights, fee simple, what, basically the things you just talked about.
Yes, sir.
The green belt, to me, seems a little different in that with the green belt, you are now able to go in and pocket developers and also municipalities or other entities that have given development, PUDs to developers. It's like fattening the pockets of developers. Do you see it differently?
Not necessarily, well, I would phrase it differently, Mr. Glover. I take your point.
Are you a lawyer? You probably.
No, no, no. The first thing I would say is this, like Rural and Critical Lands program, would, would be a voluntary approach. I mean, there'd be, you're not talking about use of eminent domain or condemnation powers. It would be on a voluntary basis, just like Rural and Critical Lands. The difficulty in, in skinning this cat or tack on this problem, give by, by way of example, Bluffton, its, its town limits, 90% of Bluffton is already under operating development agreements or PUTS. I mean, they, they got it, they got it matched out. It's like cancer cells that are lying dormant and about to spring out, okay? So, so if you really want to get to the heart of this problem, I think that opening up, buying up open space and green space from critical lands and headwaters and areas like that is critically important, and I think that's job number one. But what this statute authorizes, not requires, but authorizes the county to do, if it wants to, is to purchase densities that have previously been approved. And now, obviously, that would be subject to a negotiation between, if you decided to do that, between the county and, and the developer. And, you know, I certainly, speaking for myself, would not be an advocate for, for paying anything near, you know, market value for those. I mean, it would, it would, it would have to be going in and buying in on a discount basis, I would think voluntarily, from these developers. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't see it as a bailout or, or lining their pockets, but it is an option, because I do think if you're going to tackle the problem here, we have to frankly acknowledge that what we're dealing with now is a lot of rights that are our that what we're dealing with now is a lot of rights that are already vested, a lot of rights that are already operating under development agreements. And you remind me to make a point that I should have made earlier, Mr. Glover, is that this thing won't work. This approach won't work unless all the municipalities in Beaufort County and Beaufort County itself, all the municipalities in Jasper County and Jasper County itself enters into some sort of a memorandum of understanding where they agree that they're not going to ordinarily increase the supply of these densities while, on the other hand, in the other pocket, we're attempting to buy them up. I mean, so it's going to have to be a regional collaborative effort. And you're absolutely right. This is going to be a failed approach if we go about and buy up densities or buy up open space and green space and you still have the town of Bluffton or the city of Hardyville or whatever it might be annexing tracks in and granting higher densities. And so my view is that in order to get this passed to the people, I think we're going to have to demonstrate, or the counties will have to demonstrate, municipalities will have to demonstrate, that what they've done in the past is not going to be what they continue to do in the future. And there's going to be some very hard conversations. And I appreciate, in Jasper County in particular, it's been a long time since they've had a tax base, and their citizens have gone out with some of the services that we here in Beaufort County take for granted. But my gosh, I mean, you see the hundreds of acres that they're thinking about developing at the headwaters and adjacent to the rivers, and it's just going to ruin things. And there's going to be some hard conversations. Otherwise, this won't work. And your points well taken.
Ready else? Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thank you for coming out, Senator Davis. Actually love the out-of-the-box thinking to get something like this done. We had a small percentage of this on the transportation tax. I'll tell you though, one of the things that I did not like about the transportation tax was the longevity of it. The 10 years kind of scares me just because of the way Beaufort County changes so rapidly, things that made sense at one time don't make sense now. So I was running some numbers. Right here, we have half a cent for 10 years, which equals out to about $35 million a year. If we did a full cent for four years, that gives us about $70 million a year and puts us to about $280 million. So it's a $70 million difference, but in the six-year difference of timeframe. The same argument you have for going with the half a cent to put faith into the council, make sure we're doing this properly, because it's a pilot program, is the same argument I use for the shorter term. Willing to go for one cent to go towards, you know, four, and lower down to four years to say, hey, we're being active, we're focusing on these areas, and we are actually putting our money where our mouth is to lower the density at this timeframe. I was just kind of curious what your thoughts behind that process, behind the half penny to the full penny, but for a shorter period of time to show that we're getting it done.
Yeah, I think you make some valid points, Mr. Cunningham. I guess my only response would be, from a political standpoint and in taking the issue to the voters for approval, given this economic climate, there's something about a half penny, I think, that makes it easier to sell, for lack of a better word, than a full penny. For me, the main thing is just doing it at a scale that's going to make a difference. And whether you do it over a 10-year amortization with a half penny or you do it over, you know, half that time at a full penny, it's, either way, for me, is fine. The only thing I would note is that politically, it may be more of a lift to have a full penny because people tend to focus on that aspect of it as opposed to the duration.
Joe, Larry.
Senator, just a question on the logic of moving in the direction that I'm hearing. If we were to postpone the sales tax referendum for transportation, let's say till '24, during the period of time in '23 and '24, the possibility exists that we could collect enough funding from that freefall of cash that's coming to the state without imposing a one-cent sales tax on our citizens. And we would be able to get that money, working with the delegation that you're a member of, to bring that money to us. And if we found after two years that that did not work, we could then go back with the referendum recommendation to get the money we need, but hoping during that two-year period, with the collaboration of the delegation that you're a member of, we could have money come into us so we would be able to start the work on the road and the pathways and the other things we're doing, but at the same time, maybe collect either a half penny or a full penny to stop the development that we're seeing that's ruining the environment that's brought us all here and would give us an early start on perhaps buying some land in the Rural and Critical Lands Program and also perhaps stop some of the 500 house projects and perhaps make those 200 or 300 homes rather than 500. And at the same time, accomplish everything we're trying to do without imposing two taxes at once for that two-year period where we could get federal and state money and then do something with the green space sales tax effort. Does that make sense?
It does. I agree with everything that you said, Mr. McCellin. I would summarize it by saying this, is that by deferring until 2024 a referendum for a sales tax for transportation projects, you do two things, in my opinion. One, you're exploring whether or not they can be funded, given the money that's already out there, and thereby maybe diminishing or lowering the list of things you need to borrow money for. And secondly, you're demonstrating to the public that as a county council, before going to them and local dollars, that you're doing your due diligence in regard to whether or not any of this state and federal money can take some of those items off the list. And the last thing I would say, and I shouldn't have mentioned it earlier, the reason why something like this is necessary and that you just don't impose a moratorium is because you run into inverse condemnation problems when you do that. We've already given, and I say we because I'm a member of Beaufort County, I'm a citizen of Beaufort County, we did, or municipalities or counties, whatever, we've already given developers vested rights. And if there were going to be a moratorium imposed or something, you know, sort of like a top-down push, you would be in court with inverse condemnation actions and probably, most likely, would lose. I think what makes this appealing and made it appealing to my colleagues in the Senate on both sides of the aisle was, it is a market approach, it's a voluntary approach. It's the county sitting down across the table and seeing whether or not a deal can be voluntarily struck, so you don't bring in those aspects of inverse condemnation to it.
You see, and I'm not a construction person, and I know you're not either, but do you see in the next 18 months to two years, some of that demand lessening so that more contractors are freed up? Or do you think it's just going to?
I think it'll escalate, Mr. McCellin. I just think that Beaufort County is such a desirable place to live. And I think one of the legacies of our COVID experience has been to teach people that they can work from remote locations. They don't necessarily have to be in an urban center. They can live in paradise and then work online, and I don't see that phenomenon changing. In fact, I see it accelerating over time.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Chris, go ahead.
Councilman Howard, go first, I'll go after.
Who was first?
Alex.
Oh, Alex, I'm sorry, Alex, I didn't see you.
This is kind of getting in the weeds, but I know you can give us a good example of it. I look at the seven options for preservation procurements, and I'm familiar with many of them through our Rural and Critical Lands Program. But leases with options to purchase, how do you see that working? Because, you know, you're going to buy a lease with this tax money. It doesn't seem like a really good option to me.
I think, and it may well not be, Ms. Howard, I think the intention there was, and this comes directly from the proposed legislation, which I drafted, I tried to be as expansive as possible so that the county and/or its committee that it appoints has a full range of options in trying to tackle this problem. And the idea was not to constrain them. I mean, if there's ways for people to get creative, if there's ways for people to, you know, have some beneficial use while at the same time decreasing some densities, the idea here was to expand the universe of things and not necessarily to argue for the merits of any particular one of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any else? We're getting close to the 8 o'clock hour.
Motion to extend beyond the 8 o'clock hour.
Ah, well, second.
What was the motion?
To extend.
Beyond the 8 o'clock hour.
To hang out with you longer, Mr. Somerville. That's what we're going to do.
Without objection, the motion to extend beyond 8 o'clock.
Doesn't mean you have to stay after 8 o'clock.
I apologize.
There are no objections.
I had eye surgery and then an infection developed in my throat, and so I've been going every day to Mount Pleasant to have this thing irrigated out. So I'm on Percocet, so I'm kind of, I'm a little, I think I'm lucid. But I'll tell you that every morning that I go and drive there, I got to allow myself two hours to get there. And I drive down 17, I get on 526, and I sit there. And I hate to say this because Mount Pleasant is, there's lots of fine people on Mount Pleasant, but I don't want Beaufort County or Southern Beaufort County in particular, because that's where the growth is, to become another Mount Pleasant. And I've seen that happen. I mean, there's always so many places where roads can go. I mean, all of us have been up in the air and looked down, and you see the finite amount of land that there is, and the number of cars squeezing through is like blood through a clotted artery. I mean, it's just, you can't do anything about it except maybe defend the blood. So anyway, that's my, that had gone out.
Any other question? This is just a reminder, everybody, this is title only, it's just discussion.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And I'm glad you said that because Dana Beach.
Percocet? Did I do it okay?
He did fine. Dana Beach basically admonished us the same thing. He said, when he left and he stepped down as Director of Coastal Conservation, he said, make sure that you make infrastructure a part of your planning. He said, because if you do, you'll be just like Charles. And that's what we're trying to move forward, planning for that. And that's why this infrastructure study was done by a task force to bring back to us so that we can plan ahead so that we don't become a Charles from Mount Pleasant trying to move around.
Before we move on to the next point, respond to that. You make a great point. There are really two sides of the same coin. If you're going to tackle the problem of traffic and congestion and things of that nature, one without the other isn't going to work.
Sure, I agree with you.
You do need the conservation and you do need the improved transportation, which is why I think it's incredibly valuable that county had a committee go out there and come up with what those priorities are. I mean, I really do. There are two sides of the same coin, and you're right to point that out.
Yes, sir. And they did a great job, and I do believe in both sides. So I'm really, you know, in favor of the penny, even to the point now of half and half and allowing at least 350 for the infrastructure, 350 for buying down density. I don't think we can come out, if we're going to sell a penny, I don't think we can sell two referendums. I don't care whether it's a half a penny on each one. I think the citizens will, might support one without the other. And all I've said to people going out, based on the 2018 referendum, do you know when it started? In May of 2019? And they said, no. I said, two and a half years later, it's ended. Did you know when it ended?
Right.
They said, no. I said, yeah, and that mean, that short time, we collected over $135 million. So I don't think it's a hard sell, but I do think that if we go half and half, it'll be short of what the committee task force said to us that we need. And I just wanted to put you on record to say that you will do all you can to get the remaining $300,000.
Here, here, York, well done.
A million dollars. But, and last, a couple of weeks ago, when I first started kicking this idea around and thought about trying to blend the two, and what I learned was that since these sales taxes emanate from different statutory authorizations, there would have to be two separate referendums. And you're right, even though as a practical matter, people not, might not realize when it went on or when it came off, when they're sitting in that voting booth in November and they see one or two, you're right, they're more likely to pick one than the other. And I think they would pick, I would bet, the open space. And I would not like to see the roads transportation initiative sullied or hindered by that vote. I think that a much stronger case could be made in 2024 for the reasons that I've stated.
Yep. Chris, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Yes, sir.
Senator Davis, appreciate the presentation. I've got two questions, one's for you, one's for council. I'm curious in your opinion whether or not you think growth pays for itself.
It can if you're in a jurisdiction where the growth is accompanied by the impact fees that we ordinarily associate with growth, whether it be roads or schools or any number of things. I think South Carolina is relatively constrained in that regard, although we did do a positive step with the roads fee. I think we reinstituted that and reauthorized that, and that is something you can continue to levy, so that certainly helps. So I think, under the right circumstances, with appropriate impact fees to cover externalities assigned to developer, I think it can. But I would submit to you that our problem here is that not, I mean, growth can't pay for itself because of the tight parameters within which that growth is taking place and the congestion that it causes and the degradation to the environment it causes. It's not like you're in Greenville or you're in a space that has a lot of land. We're very, very finite in regard to the amount of land we have and very constrained as to where the bridges are. So I think in that context, it's difficult for growth to pay for itself here, unconstrained growth.
I would tend to agree. And I think it's interesting the way that you phrase that, that it can, but as a practical matter, I would be curious as to whether or not we actually accomplish that. So I would almost view this as a tax reduction plan that's long-term as opposed to a tax increase. So that was my question to you. The other question that I would have for just council broadly is, is this going to replace the Rural and Critical Program? Or how would those two things interplay?
I would say it was going to supplement it initially. We're going to have X number of dollars coming in from the half penny or the penny or whatever it is, and it's going to be well-funded. They may get in a situation where they can't spend it fast enough. I'm not sure that's going to be the case, but.
Yeah, so the, if you all recall, when I briefed council in this last meeting, we will still have the Rural and Critical Lands money there, but Senator Davis was gracious enough to work with the Vice Chairman Somerville and me to add language into the legislation that allows us to use the penny portion to service the bond for Rural and Critical Lands so we could, if this is adopted through a half penny, then we could delete that debt millage from people's individual avalorum property taxes.
That's an excellent point. I should have pointed out that there is, because of that, a property tax reduction component to it. I would also say, not to get too much into the selling of it to the electorate, but I think people intuitively understand that if they own property, and if you're talking about overdevelopment, that's going to degrade the environment around them and make it a less desirable place to live, it's going to affect their property tax values. If you're talking about, you know, thousands of new homes coming into the area, just the operation of principal supply and demand, that's going to impact the value of their homes as well. I'm confident that a very strong and persuasive case can be made in favor of open space. I don't think a strong and persuasive case can be made right now in regard to the transportation penny because of the existing state and federal dollars that are out there. And I believe there needs to be an effort, a concerted effort, that's documented and requested by council to the delegation, to exhaust that effort first before you then go back and say, okay, we tried to address these critical transportation needs, to Mr. Glover's point. We weren't able to get it from the state and federal dollars that were appropriated. Now, therefore, we're going back to you for a penny sales tax, or a fraction of a penny, whatever it ends up being. Or to Mr. Cunningham's point, maybe you wanted to lengthen the time or telescope the time, and that would then allow you to adjust the penny, so.
Senator, would you agree to get with Chairman Passamit and arrange for members of this body to meet with the people who are in the South Carolina Legislative Delegation as soon as possible?
Sure.
We understand your commitment. We'd sure like to hear from them as well.
Sure.
About their commitment. So if we could do that, that'd be great.
Matter of inquiry, when is the meeting in July that's being held? Do you know?
11th, I think, isn't it?
July 11?
11th, I think.
Okay. What I'll do, Mr. McCellin, is I will contact members of the delegation and tell them about the meeting on July 11th, tell them the purpose of it is to kind of give an expression of their willingness to help try to get some of this money, how we might go about doing it. And there's a number of different ways, you know, the DOT, the CIV, the CDC, the general fund. Again, a billion dollars has been set aside and not spent in the general fund. I mean, so there's lots of opportunities, unique opportunities right now, quite frankly, because of federal government prolificity, you know, with the money kind of floating around out there.
Yep.
I think there's an opportunity to go out there and get some of it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a personal request to make to the Senator for infrastructure. I got a, and you've been on St. Helena many times.
Yes, sir.
One way on, one way off. There's a bridge called the Chalene Creek Bridge. We're going to need some widening on that bridge. I just want to throw that out to you.
You talk to certain people on Hilton Head, they would have another way off, St. Helena Islander would take you over to Hilton Head. Holland Island, and it would take you over to Hilton Head. So I'm not sure if that's what you have in mind.
No, no, no.
Stu, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Senator. I said at our last meeting that I think, however we get there, we need to do a penny on this one, and we need to do a penny on the transportation, not that we need to do both of them immediately. And my thought on the one that you're talking about is that if you do some back of the envelope, and you look at 50,000 homes that are out there in all this development, you're into billions and billions of dollars of potential value, property, land values. And that kind of drives me that at some point we need the full penny, otherwise it may be too little chasing too much. So I am a strong proponent, you know, I would yield to whether we do a half now and some a little bit later, or whether we do the full. I think that's political judgment. But I do think at some point we need to get to the full penny, just to make an impact.
You make a great point in regard to scale. And the Rural and Critical Lands Program's a wonderful program. It is nowhere near the scale that's necessary to address what the problem is here. I guess the only reason I would argue in favor of the half penny is a political argument. It would not be a substantive argument in terms of, is the money necessary, or would it be doing good things? It's more in the nature of, is this something that I could get past, we could get past?
And I'm not arguing for either one. I'm just, I'm really supporting your point. I would yield to political judgment of how we get to the penny at some point in time. The second one relative to the transportation piece, from everything I've seen of all the numbers we've looked at, we're going to need the penny at some point in time, just when you look at the magnitude of what's coming at us from a roads standpoint. I'm not uncomfortable with doing it two years from now. But if we go down that path, I think there's a piece that we have to understand, and that is, even though there's a lot of this money floating around, we still have to be in the pipeline to get it, when you go through all the regulations. And what that says to me is that we need to be, take, whether it's $5, $10, $15 million, and get started on the preliminary engineering, and be willing to do some matching along the way, so that we look shovel-ready and can get those funds.
I think that's an excellent point, and it would also strengthen the delegation's ability, I think, to make its case to the DOT. I think that's an excellent point.
And for example, I think the one that we've spoken about is 170. I think it's probably the most failing and the most dangerous one in the region at this point in time. And as you know, we've teamed up with Jasper County and Hardyville to get on with the first phase. But the next really big phase is to six-lane that road, whenever we do it. And Jared has had some conversations with DOT about perhaps doing a design build, which would mean that we wouldn't have to go to the traditional 30% of design before, but we'd have to do something to be ready to do that. So I just think we've got to step back, if we're going to delay it, not that we don't need it, but we've got to...
Logan had a comment, and I think the senator has given us enough.
But we've got to be willing to spend some money to position ourselves so that we can allow you all to push money our way. My sense is, if we don't do that, it gets very difficult for you all to move things forward.
Yes, sir.
Logan, you have something quickly you want to?
Yeah, real quick. The half penny makes sense, you're right. Getting something passed is better than getting nothing passed. So let's say we come back 2024, and we do the 10-year half a penny, that's 350 million. We'd probably want to come back with eight years at half a penny again on that transportation tax then, because we don't want to go to 7.5%. We definitely don't want to go to 8%. That's on par with New York. There's a reason people are coming this way. So with that said, you know, yeah, it saves taxpayers $70 million, lowers the density for the future, and the $70 million would be the difference of not taxing the full penny for that, or the extra half penny for that year. So that's the 420 million difference we'd be looking at from our estimated budget that we had before, which, who knows how that's going to go. I just want to throw that out there for us to counsel, what does our future vote look like in two years, then? Is it another half penny, so it comes to a full penny, puts us at 7%? Is it four-year? I mean, there's a lot to think about. I think it's a great idea. I think we need to move forward with it. I'm 100% supportive of the idea. I think it's just those logistics that I'd love to get the delegation's idea, your guys' idea, you, to see what's the best for Beaufort County now, and in those next 10 years, to make the entire project successful.
And to Mr. McCollum's point, I think having the other delegation members here to talk with you, and you having the opportunity to ask them some questions, will give you some answers to those questions.
One final question before you go.
Sure.
How much of this will be covered, do you think, by visitors to the area?
You know, I know there was some analysis done in connection with the gas tax, you know, so using that as a correlative measurement.
Yep.
I think you're talking roughly, Eric, help me out here, what percentage would you say of the gas tax, 40% to 50% is by people coming in from out of state?
Yeah, it's around half.
Right. And I don't know there'd be a direct correlation between the gas tax ratios and that, but I think that's a pretty good measure.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, all very much.
Senator, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we're now, we now have arrived at the new number 13, which is the second reading of an ordinance for...
We have to vote on this one, I think, you know, I made a motion, we have to, we finished...
What was your motion?
So bring it up.
What was your motion?
The motion, the motion was to introduce an ordinance by time limit, it'll levy in a vote.
Call it. Do we need a roll call on this?
I don't think so. You have to find if the discussion is over, and then we can take a vote.
Discussion is absolutely over. Do we need, do we need a roll call, or can we accept this by...
Who's second? Who did the second?
Mr. Rodman.
Okay.
Without objection.
Are we able to move this to a penny if we so desire?
Oh, yeah, the details haven't been worked out yet.
Nothing came out. I left out the amount, Chris. It's just the sales tax, no number.
Perfect.
Yeah, this is just title only. Without objection, we're going to approve the new item, the new number 12, as introduced by Mr. McCollum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering, this will be going to a committee for discussion about whether a half percent or a penny, correct? Executive Committee, perhaps? Can you hear me, Paul?
Yeah, I heard you. I'm just thinking. Yeah, yeah, I think that makes perfect sense.
And I think there's other things in it, too.
Natural resources.
Plenty of things to talk about in this. This is 10 pages.
Natural Resources will take it up.
Okay, thank you.
I was just about to ask, what are we looking at for timeline, then? We've got to get this passed to public. I don't think we have time to get through it.
We don't have time for that, do we?
We have to learn how to control the mob.
The vote did not refer the motion, and the second did not refer it to a committee. I don't know that you have time to refer it to a committee. We've got to have this to the state in August, or to our voting registration office in August.
Yeah.
So we're on a tight, we're on a tight timeframe. Let us take a shot at putting together the ordinance, and the details and all that, we'll send it out to everyone. We can take our best, take our best shot at it.
We have to call a special meeting if we have to, right?
That's correct.
Yep. All right. Number, the new number 12 is resolved. Number 13, which is what was originally on the agenda, second reading of an ordinance for 2020, 2022 Transportation Sales Tax Referendum.
I'll make the motion to table that for an undisclosed date.
Motion to table.
I'll second it.
Who seconded it?
I'll second it, it's Brian.
Excellent. Without objection, we will table...
No, you do not want to table it. Just table means you want to come back to it during this meeting.
Postpone.
You want to postpone it.
Just for you, Joe, I'm going to postpone it to an undisclosed date.
I'm not sure that's right. I mean, I understand the difference.
That's right.
But do we really want to take it up at our next meeting? I don't know if we do or not.
I do. I'm not so long...
Okay, all right, postpone it is.
If you don't take it up at your next meeting, you're probably not going to be able to do it.
That's true.
Because we're, we only have one meeting in July, unless you all want to call a special call meeting in July.
So you want to postpone it to a time certain. You have to give us a time certain. Next meeting?
July 11th, yeah.
Yes.
July 11th.
July 11th. There you go. Okay. Who seconded? You did?
I did not. No.
I did.
Did the second okay with that?
Mr. Flau.
Come with me.
Brian did? Are you okay with the 11th, Brian?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Without objection.
I don't object, but I want to make sure I'm clear. At the next meeting, we'll have the green build for second reading.
Green space.
Green space.
Green space. Get it right. Green space for second reading, and this would also be in consideration for second reading.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Without objection, we will approve the postponement of what is now Item 13, till our July 11th meeting. Brings it up to the new number 14, which is Public Hearing and Second Reading of an Ordinance Authorizing the County Administrator to Execute the Necessary Documents and Provide Funding for the Purpose of Purchase of Real Property Identified as 3600 Road for the Hilton Head Island Airport Expansion. Purchase price $947,500. The AA grant, an FAA grant, is 814, and the airport is responsible, 133. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Which is paid by our... Do you have a second?
We have a public hearing with this one, too.
I'll second it.
And we have a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on what's now Item 14 on the agenda? Hearing none. Without objection, we'll pass what is now Item 14.
I might encourage counsel to consider taking these next four items. They're relatively straightforward. Just read them into the record. You might want to consider taking one motion and one vote on the next four items. Councilmember Rodman taught me how to do that through this committee.
Well, good. We'll dredge up Mr. Rodman's approach. We now, we just approved number...
14.
14, so I'm going to ask for a motion for 15, 16, and 17 combined.
And 18.
And 18.
So moved.
And without objection, Sarah, did you get the maker of the motion? Okay.
So seconded.
Without objection, we will approve items 15, 16, and 17.
And 18.
No, not 18.
Yes.
It's the new...
Okay, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, we can do 18. All right. So the motion was to approve jointly 15, 16, 17, and 18, was seconded, and without objection, it passes. Fair enough? Okay. Now we're at citizens' comments. You folks have been here all night.
I've been on the campaign trail for three months, and I've talked to a lot of people. And my background is international banking investment. And I understand, I don't know if you know this or not, but I learned on the campaign trail that about three weeks ago, Melrose Place was sold. Are you all aware of that? Oh, you are, okay. So Red Holdings in Chicago. Do you know who the stakeholders are?
No.
China, they're from China.
Thank you. All matters having been brought before this body, we are adjourned. Thank you for catching 18. That looks different.